I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed session, were heard, discussed, or considered.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Here. Or I?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Right. That brings us to item 3.01, the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could please have the Matoka Elementary SEA Executive Board come up, please. Elizabeth Conahay, come up to the microphone, please. Elizabeth Conahay, Conahan, sorry. Aleah Savage, I'm sorry, Elizabeth is SEA President. Aleah is SEA Vice President. Emma Tripilo is SEA Treasurer. Lila Smith is SEA Secretary. And Isabel Rutters is SEA Historian. And they are joined by Rose Burwell and Destiny Harris. I'm sorry? And a lot of siblings. Hello, welcome siblings, who are the SEA sponsors. Can lead us whenever you're ready.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a just and just
Thank you all very much. I particularly like your T-shirts. They're quite lovely.
You're going to take a knee.
Thank you.
Never. Over my dead.
Thank you very much. Sosa, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Just here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Ombi, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. And any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Agenda is approved, so that brings us to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. The Tuano Middle School Robotics Team recently won first place for their robotics research project. The project consisted of designing and 3D printing and innovation to prevent rags from clogging pipes and ruining machinery at the Williamsburg Water Treatment Plant. Congratulations to all the team members on this great invention. Congratulations also to Jamestown Senior Susanna Mays for winning the highest model UN award of best delegate at the College of William and Mary High, well, excuse me, College of William and Mary High School Model United Nations Competition. Jamestown High School sophomore Zoe Averett and Jenny Park also received verbal recommendations for their work in the World Trade Organization representing Saudi Arabia. The Lafayette High School Theater Department was recently named as champions at the Super Regional VHSL One Act Competition. The one act play, These Shining Lives, won first place among seven other schools. Top performer and best actor at Super Regional was junior Christine Strong. Other best actors were seniors Tara Devie and Eric Stumpf. Lafayette High School moves on to the state competition on December 5th. This is the 11th year in a row that Lafayette High School Theater has taken the team to the VHSL One Act State Meet, so congratulations. Clary Bird Baker was chosen as best elementary school for the fourth year in a row at Williamsburg's Occasion for the Arts. Paige Becker, a third grade artist, won Best in Show for her oil pastel portrait. And five honorable mentions were awarded to CBB students. Tucker Simon for a ceramic T-Rex sculpture. Stella Richardson for a ceramic dolphin and wave sculpture. Janaya Billups for a ceramic swan sculpture. Anya Christensen for a soft sculpture doughnut. And Ryan Sousa for a soft sculpture jellyfish. Congratulations to all of these students. Finally, Madam Chair, a reminder that WJCC Schools will host two opportunities for the review of draft redistricting maps that will be presented to the board later this evening. That's all of the announcements I have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Is there any way we can get photographs of those sculptures? I want to see the dolphin with the waves.
I'm sure we can get pictures for the board.
Are there any other announcements from any board members?
Um, I just want everyone to be sure to head out to the Williamsburg Parade on Saturday at 8:00 in the morning so that they can see every single one of our schools mascots in a special, one of the parade cars floats. So anyway, just, it'll be fun to see. I don't know if that's ever been done before, if we've had representatives from every mascot. So it's 8 o'clock Saturday morning, colonial Williamsburg.
That actually reminds me, on December 9th, Saturday morning, is the Centerra Sleigh Bell. And that's another place that you can see all the mascots. And also run a 5K at the same time. All right. If there's nothing else, that moves us to board recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have several individuals to recognize. We begin with an exceptional Jamestown student. Alexa Halco has done it again. Tonight, we are honored to recognize Alexa for being named 2017 Female Track Athlete of the Year for the Paralympic Team USA. Alexa competed at the World Championships in London and won two silver medals in the women's 400 and 800 meter and a bronze in the 100 meters. The Rio 2016 Silver Medalist leads the rankings in the 400, 800, and 1500 and is the American record holder in all three events, plus the 200. This is Alexa's third straight nomination for the All-American list. Alexa, thank you for joining us up front to be recognized. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Suzanne McCory was recently named Theater Coach of the Year at the Virginia Association of Forensic Theater and Debate Coaches Annual Contest. This award, given by members, is bestowed upon fellow coaches who have over time empowered their students, created winning teams, and mentored fellow coaches throughout the state of Virginia in either forensics, theater, or debate competitions. Mrs. McCory has coached both VHSL forensics teams and VHSL theater at Lafayette High School. In 2014, Suzanne was named Forensics Coach of the Year, and her forensics teams have won three state titles. Suzanne, congratulations on your accomplishment. WJCC's Public Relations and Engagement Department recently earned an Award of Merit from the Chesapeake Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or CHESBRA, in the category of Special Campaign. The team submitted equity through engagement branding items, which included the logo, PowerPoint template design, videos of board presentations, and the equity website. CHESBRA encompasses school divisions in Virginia, Maryland, Washington DC, and West Virginia. Betsy Overkamp Smith and Ronnie Shoah have joined us at the front of the room to be recognized for this outstanding accomplishment. Well done. Madam Chair, these are all of the recognitions this evening. We look forward to more recognitions in December.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. That brings us to 5.02, School Spotlight, Norwich Elementary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to present Norwich Elementary this evening. And Ms. Veronda Matthews, their very proud principal, is going to present the school this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I am Veronda Matthews, Principal of Norwich Elementary School, which, in my humble opinion, is among the finest of learning institutions. I, along with my Assistant Principal, Mrs. Heather Evans, and my members of my leadership team and teaching staff, am very happy to shine the spotlight on our school community tonight. As the season would have it, it is, by all accounts, celebration time, a time for considering the things for which we are grateful, reflecting on the wonderful opportunities we have been afforded, and showing gratitude to those around us. In tonight's spotlight, I am happy to showcase what makes us grateful to be a part of the Norwich Elementary community. With generous help from our Division's Director of Public Relations and Engagement, as well as the expertise of WJCC's Digital Design Specialist, what could have easily been a feature film has been reduced to a short video, which captures the essence of our students, staff, and community. When I consider all that I'm grateful for, leading and learning at Norwich continues to climb the ranks. Please enjoy our presentation, and thank you for this opportunity. In this season of Thanksgiving, there's so much to be grateful for, especially here at Norwich Elementary School. Our students come to Norwich with a smile on their faces every morning, and they are genuinely happy to be here. The energy is felt throughout everyone, from the parents that come, to the volunteers, to other students. Norwich truly is a fun and exciting and engaging place to learn, to make friends, to make mistakes, and to learn how to grow.
When I think about that question, what I'm most grateful for here at Norwich, I would say the teachers, because they're so dedicated with the students. And that gives me more time to work with kids in small groups that need that extra help.
I'm grateful for the smiley faces that come through that door every day. It restores my faith in mankind. It makes me want to come to work and to enjoy my job.
Norwich has just had this wonderful, warm, and friendly atmosphere. I love the students. I love the staff. I feel like we are just one great big family.
I am so grateful for the many resources that we have, just to name a few. The PTA takes such great care of teachers and students. And I'm also grateful for Dream Box that we have. We just got this year for K-1 students, and within 30 days, we've already seen 13% growth in our students. And our community volunteer, Mr. Lot, he gives two full days a week just working with our students, developing math literacy here at Norwich.
I like it because, um, well, your dad can come and do stuff that your class does with you, and it seems like so much fun since you get so much support.
It's very special. I think, you know, being able to come in and spend time with your child in school, and as well as seeing all these young and energetic faces and wonderful attitudes, and just the joy on their face when you get to give them a high five and interact with them. It's really, to me, it's inspirational, and it's awesome to be able to just be part of it and feed off the energy that these little ones have.
So as the computer resource teacher at Norwich, I am thankful for all the resources that we have here, the technology that we have, the online resources that we can use for research and other projects. And I'm also really thankful for getting the chance to collaborate with our media specialist, our ITRT, and for this particular project that our students are working on right now, with the whole fifth grade team.
As the Assistant Principal, I am just so thankful for all of the wonderful families and students that we have here. It's just such a family environment.
I think I'm most grateful for the families that go to Norwich. The families that go here, they're just awesome families. They care. Their kids are wonderful. The staff here also is wonderful. It allows us to do a lot of things outside the classroom, sort of like building this outdoor theater with the kids the other year that we did. And we're doing a butterfly garden this year, and we're doing a lot of extra things. And couldn't do that without such a wonderful family here at Norwich. That's what I'm most grateful for.
I am grateful to be working at Norwich because I get up every morning, coming at 6 o'clock, to do my part to make sure these babies have a clean learning environment. Because when these babies thrive, we all thrive. I am so grateful. I love doing what I do. And that's why I'm grateful to be at Norwich.
Would everyone who's here from Norwich please stand so we can applaud you? Does anyone have any comments or questions from Ms. Matthews?
I just thought that was a great video. I just see the engagement of the staff and the students. That was wonderful.
It was wonderful. Thank you for doing that and sharing that with us. I'd like to say that one of my favorite times to walk through the halls of Norwich is in the spring. I think that's when you have Fine Arts Night or somewhere around, and so all the artwork, it's just, it's a magical, it's a magical school. And that's, it really comes alive there, and you can see all the spirit of the children and wonderful creativity. So anyway, thank you for being here and for showing this. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, Citizens Comments. And if I understand correctly, we do not have any speaker card?
Correct. There are no speaker cards.
So with that, we will move on to the Consent Agenda, which is item 7.01, Approval of the Minutes from the following meetings, October 17th, 2017. 2.02, Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for October 2017. Personnel Actions as Presented. Review Policy BBFA Board Member Conflict of Interests and Member Ethics. 7.05, Revised Policy JO Student Scholastic Records. 7.06, Retire Policy INE Assemblies. 7.07, New Policy IICCB-IICC Community Resource Persons and School Volunteers. And 7.08, Revised Policy INB Teaching About Controversial Issues. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Can I have a second, please? All right. Any discussion? Moved in second then. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next series of items are proposed agenda items that we will talk about tonight, but then also will appear on our December agenda. We only have one meeting in December, rather, so this is our process of discussing things and moving them along into the next meeting before we take action. So the first is item 8.01, the Fiscal Year 2019 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. And just a reminder that we are planning to take action on this at our December meeting so that it can then be forwarded to our funding partners for their consideration. So with that, Dr. Heron, do you want to have any opening remarks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we've had some opportunity to look at this already. I made my presentation on October 17th, and then the board has had one opportunity to discuss it already. And this brings it back again with more information for the board's further consideration.
So before we jump into the conversation, I just want to circle back and kind of divide the conversation into topics. The first is, at the last meeting, the maintenance idea, the maintenance items that were on. There were no, there was no interest in discussing that. Everybody was satisfied with that. And the data to back up the justification for the cost and the timing of that. So assuming that that is true, we'll move on to the next topic, which is elementary schools. That isn't included in, farther out in the CIP, in a timeframe that would not make it into a five-year CIP for either funding partner. But we did have that conversation to remind the public and ourselves and our funding partners that our elementary capacity is at that point where we would then ask for space. And so that's why, why we've done that. And we also talked about any opportunity to realize additional space at the elementary level because of the special programs that are there. So does anyone have anything to add about that? All right. So then I think that moves us to the rest of the CIP, and particularly the high schools. Does anyone want to start that conversation? Then I will, do you have any questions, Sandy?
Well, one of my concerns is, last time when we met, we were talking about the cost of the additional additions to the, for design and construction. And that's a lot of money we're talking about. I'm concerned that, instead of thinking, I mean, this comes up to 2022, and we will have already spent almost 30, well, almost $30 million for that. And I would be interested in knowing how much a new high school is going to cost. I know we talked about it, and at the last meeting, it was pointed out that we probably don't have enough reason to build a new high school. But I'm concerned that we're going to do construction at Jamestown, Warhill, and Lafayette, which is going to cost our taxpayers and our funding partners $30 million. And, well, it's not quite 30. Five, ten. Well, 23 million. And I'm concerned that that money could be applied towards building a new high school.
So I think you bring up a good topic of the idea of expansion versus building a new
Yes, and having that money put towards something that we are eventually going to need. And as we know, things are not going to get cheaper in the next 10 years. They're just going to become, the cost is going to become more and more expensive. So I would like some input onto how much building a new high school would cost versus this amount of money being spent on design and construction for additional capacity at our high schools.
Dr. Heron, could you address that at the same time that you address the additional costs that we would need to expand maker space and core space at Jamestown? So because doing the additions, we realized some savings by folding those together, so we'd have to unpack that again. So if you could kind of talk about that together, then
That's true. If I could talk about the high school, first of all, it's very hard to give an actual figure because it depends on the size of the high school, number of square feet. Depends, you know, when we would build it, whether construction costs go up and down, depending on the economy as well. It could range anything, and I'll ask Mr. Snipes to jump in on this as well. Anything from 70 to 100 million?
Yeah.
Is that about right?
Yeah, so in 2006, '07, Warhill was 54 million.
That's correct.
I don't know, I'm not sure if that included land. I know that was design and construction. But yeah, so the land was, came from the county separately. So that's, you have to go buy land. Obviously, that makes a different number.
Absolutely.
And, and just, so 2006 or '07 was kind of a building boom. Costs kind of came down a little bit after that. And so I don't think, I don't think you can put a straight 3% inflation rate from 2007 to today, but it's going to be a little bit more. I'd probably, if I was giving an educated guess, I'd probably say 60 to 65 million
At least.
For Warhill High School, size high school.
Do we have general consensus that, as Dr. Beers was talking about during our last meeting, that the community wants high schools to be below a certain population? I mean, is that still what our community wants versus keeping, you know, having three schools and adding on and having them be perhaps all a little bigger? I don't know how everyone else, I don't know what, where our, as a community, our consensus is.
The challenge that you have, if we do the expansions, you're adding permanent capacity. So you're making all three of the high schools that much bigger. So when it comes time to build a fourth high school, and I think that, I think we can all say that it's inevitable that we're going to build a fourth high school eventually. I don't know if that's five years from now or 50 years from now, but there's going to be a fourth high school. And so that makes that, if you do permanent expansion, it makes that a harder hurdle to cross, as far as when you build that. The community in the past has always thought the 1,300 to 1,400 is about the right size for being able to offer, you know, varied programming and athletic facility, athletics and that kind of thing. So, but do, I think, do we know right now if that's still, I don't know that we know that right now.
I've got a, I've been working with our projections and the actual enrollments. And the numbers that I've come up with, right now, if you take, which is generally acceptable, accepted, 85% capacity as a way of looking at, that's sort of your goal. You don't want to get too much over that, if it's possible. But if you look at 85% capacity, we have, I actually have the exact number. We are over by 453 students. I also looked at the most likely projections. And between now and 2027, the projections are 454 students. So if you add those numbers up, you're getting 900 students. And that's assuming that there's no other kind of growth, there's no other kind of changes. And again, that's why I come back and, and I'm trying to adhere to. One of the things that led to the creation of the third high school was the, was the notion that public or citizens wanted small high schools. They did not want large high schools. There was discussion about expansion back then, and it was not supported. And this, I'm not just talking about myself, I'm not just talking about a former superintendent, or older people, or, there's another group in here too, or my friends. I'm talking about citizens, parents in my neighborhood, in your neighborhoods, and other neighborhoods as well, that that's one of the primary reasons they have moved to Williamsburg. They, the overwhelming majority of parents that I talk to believe that we have one of the finest school systems in the state. We got issues, we have problems, there are challenges, but it's one of the reasons they move here. And you notice that there's not been a huge excess to York County. Remember? Maybe you weren't around here back then. But that did used to be a real challenge for Williamsburg. It was an effort by realtors to increase the population in the northern county, northern York County. And we had to live with that for a while. We're way beyond York County now in terms of the excellence of our program, our staff, the things that we're going to do. And I just, I hate making decisions like this that are really long range. We'll be dealing with this long after I'm off the school board. And, but I do think that when the decision was made to build the third high school, it was part of a long-range planning. And, and I, and I think, you know, and I guess probably the best way to find out is to have our community members send us emails. Do you want big, do you want big high schools? Or do you want small manageable high schools like the ones?
Chair. So I guess what I'm grappling with is, we, to mitigate capacity issues today. And my sense, from talking to my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors, is the county is not prepared to build us a high school anytime in the near future. Certainly not in the next five years. And so I think a stopgap to consider would be expansion. And as we discussed at the last work session, I think if we followed through with with the proposed expansions at the three high schools, we would still be considered small high schools around fifteen-hundred. And I don't think that level of expansion would preclude a fourth high school at some point down the road. But we need to mitigate capacity issues today. And we need to begin to address this in the next year. And I don't think the Board of Supervisors or the City Council is prepared to, or the community is prepared to build another high school in the next year or two. So we're, so we're grappling with essentially trailers or expansion. Like, so in my mind, that's what we're grappling with today because we need to address capacity today.
Where we were ten years ago with War Hill is a completely different, I think we're in a different environment today with regards to safety, with regards to trailers. I think we, we all have seen that in our, in our CIP with all of the money that we've been putting towards shoring up the security of our entrances. So I feel like the trailer option is a no-go because how can we put, knowing the environment that, that we're in today, how can we put our, our children kind of in a risky situation with fifteen trailers here at that high school, this high school? I don't know, it's just, it's, it's very concerning to me. I agree.
You know, Columbine was many, many, many years ago. People thought that we were all safe in our communities here. I think the other thing I would say about trailers, RICO County uses them, Chesterfield County uses them. There are no issues up there about safety. They are, they're watched like any other classroom in a school district. So I, if you want to heighten the anxiety of citizens, I suppose you could say that sort of thing. But it's, it's still, they're still part of the school. They look like part of the school. They're not that far from the school normally. So I just don't, I can't accept that argument. And also in light of the fact that we have all these wonderful cameras in all our schools so we can see what happens after it's happened, but nobody's watching those monitors when something may actually be happening. So I, when, you know, when you talk about security, you have to talk about all of the security. And I just don't think, I don't think that's, that's, that's as relevant.
Am I the only one that's concerned about trailers? I just.
No, I agree with you, Ms. Hummel.
And I think, I agree with you, Ms. Hummel, about the environment is very different today. Not only are trailers different, and it's not, it's, it's any sort of drill that our schools prepare for, whether it be weather or another type. I think our, the environment is different in terms of security, but it's also different fiscally. Ten years ago was pre, it was, it was a time when, well, the state has never supported capacity, building infrastructure, building facilities. But back then, the state would, if the locality paid for the facilities, the state came in with a certain percentage as, as defined by the SOQ. And our local composite index in James City County has gotten progressively more expensive. And this, and then our unfunded mandates have gotten progressively more expensive. So the load has shifted to our localities to the point where eighty-five percent capacity is not even in our reality at this point. Even with building a new middle school online, we're going to be pretty close to that on day one. So I think that, I think our fiscal reality is different. I think that this community and our funders are not prepared to build a fourth high school, much less operate one. And I think that we've got three campuses that could be more effectively utilized through expansions, and we could put more kids in those schools. They still would not be big high schools. They would still be well below two thousand, well below two thousand. And, and, but it'd be enough kids to get us through our projections for, for ten years. And those campuses can, you know, take a few more athletes, they can take a few more musicians and, and artists and, and absorb them quite nicely. And I think we cannot, you know, negate the fact that we would have to add cafeteria and maker space anyway. And so that would be something that would not come off the table.
Well, Chair, that same question was raised with the community. It's going to be expensive to build a third high school. Gee, we're thinking maybe we don't want to deal with that, that let's leave it up to the citizens. So that's what gave rise to the referendum. The referendum was passed, I don't know if you remember. Eighty percent of people who voted, voted in favor of that third high school, knowing how much it would cost, knowing that money had to be borrowed. I, I think it's unrealistic to say, well, we're just not going to be building a new high school in twelve years. Maybe we'll do it in twelve years, do it in ten years. I never have once, I never have once said that we have to build a high school in three or four years or five years. We don't have to. Capacity issue, if you expand all of those schools, well, that, I'm assuming that would accommodate the four hundred and fifty that were overcrowding our schools now. What about the other four hundred and fifty or five hundred that are going to be here by the end of the next ten years?
Dr. Herron, could you speak to capacity in ten years as it, as it, our projections, as it relates to are the expansions and the ability to house people for ten years?
When I made the recommendation to the board for the capital improvement plan for this year, I didn't have final projections for enrollment. They were based on very preliminary numbers. And then the numbers I got were significantly lower. So what I presented to you was to start the capacity coming, first of all, with Jamestown next year. There's different ways to look at this. There's, we always, or for a number of years, have always used most likely projections and built based on that, and I've looked at those numbers for building and for CIP. And we use low projections for funding and budget purposes. In reality, our enrollment has hit low projection or closer to low projection for the last four years. I'm presuming that's because of a slower economy, things are not moving. But our reality right now is still in low projection mode. If I sixty-four were to open up, it would be a whole, it may be a whole different ballgame, and we should use most likely projection for students coming into our area potentially. But I think if I had had the figures before I presented a possibility to you, I would have been more inclined to use the lower projection numbers. And they do give us some time so we're not actually making the decision for next year.
Are the most likely projections, the low projections?
The most likely are, project more students coming to us than what we've had in the last four years. We've actually hit within a few students of low projection for the last four years.
So should we ignore the most likely?
I think the reason we brought it forward is we have always done it that way. And yet, our reality may not be that. And I think when we make this decision, we've got to consider every possible option and perhaps give the county and city that time to have the funding to help us to do what we need to do, whether it is additions or whether it's a new high school.
Yeah, and it may be a slow economy why we've seen this slower growth, but it also may just be the, you know, our projections are that the growth in our, in James City County will be in the senior population. And we are overweighted in the senior population. That hasn't impacted the, you know, the K-12 population heretofore, but it might now start doing that. So I, I think that's also something to keep in mind. But I think before we move on to responding to the CIP that's in front of us, I think we need to kind of finish this conversation of, are we willing to use trailers in order to wait for a, a fourth high school? Or do we think expansion in the nearer term is, is the better way to go? Because I think that obviously impacts what we ask. So I am in favor of expansions. I do not think a fourth high, I don't think the numbers justify a fourth high school in the next.
I'm sorry, is this an action item? We're just doing a straw poll? What are we doing here?
So, Dr. Beers, this is our discussion about the CIP, which we have to adopt next month.
So this isn't a binding vote, is it?
Can, can I say something?
Kelly, what do you think?
Okay. You know, the, the current projections that we have do show low growth and, and it has kind of bared out that way. I would say with the exception of War Hill High School. War Hill High School was eighty-three students over the projected this year. For the past few years, they have been on an upward track. And so it's kind of interesting to figure out what's going to, what's going to go on, go on at War Hill as, because they're still building up there. They're building for family-related housing. They're not, they're not, they're not building necessarily for retirement communities, that kind of thing. What I think that, and we're kind of polluting this discussion with a discussion that we're going to have later, I think we need to have, we need to have a strategic plan of what we're going to do at the high school level. Actually, really all levels, but, but certainly at the high school level. We have a new county manager coming in who may have a different flavor and, and, you know. I talked to the Board of Supervisor member who's, who's going to be coming in for the next four years. He wasn't necessarily adverse to building a new high school, but he wanted to have a plan. And I think, I think putting a plan together is, is, you know, so that we can get up, maybe even like get a task force from the community where we get some parents and we get some administration and we get some, you know, some folks to engage in a discussion of do we want smaller high schools or, you know, the thirteen-hundred to fourteen-hundred high school paradigm? Do we want bigger high schools? How does that work? Trailers are not necessarily a bad option if it's bridging you to a plan, to, if it's bridging you to where you're going to build a school. If you look at War Hill, I think we started, we started this.
Thirteen, they had thirteen, the third high school came.
Yeah, well, I think.
And thirteen trailers.
Yeah, there was, there were trailers at Lafayette, there were trailers at Jamestown. When we started thinking about building War Hill, we started, the discussion started in earnest in two thousand and one, and we didn't get the school built until two thousand and seven. So the trailers there were a bridge, maybe that was a bridge to the bar, and it should have been, should have been closer. And we can all talk about the redistricting process that happened in two thousand and seven. But, you know, if it's part of a strategic plan, trailers, learning cottages, whatever the paradigm of the day where we're going to talk about those, the code word we use for trailers these days, I'm not necessarily adverse to them. But I don't, I don't want to just put them in there and not have a plan to get somewhere. So, so for, for me, I think the whole expansion discussion and trying to get funding for next year to do design might be a little premature, that we just, we put that off. We have a, we have a, we have a more of a community discussion. Because frankly, you know, the whole high, the middle school thing has not snuck up on the community. We have been talking about this for years. We had to shut Blair down. We were going to build Blair, we designed Blair, we see, we see bricks and mortar happening, and then everybody knows that we're going to have to do, do Blair. The high school thing has really kind of snuck up on this community a little bit. We started talking about it in May. Nobody really got engaged in it until, you know, that we started doing the, we started doing the maps and brought a consultant on board. And I really think that we just need to slow down and have a discussion as a community as far as what we think is the right answer for high schools. So that's.
What do you propose, Mr. Kelly, that the CIP look like next month when we vote?
I've, for, at this point, I would just slide everything out a year, and then we, and we have a discussion about it in, in the twenty eighteen, nineteen timeframe.
So keep, keep the additions in.
As a placeholder for something.
As placeholder and move everything out a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with him, and I agree with also really including the community in this discussion because when I've met with communities, they want to know why there isn't enough capacity. And the fact that redistricting has brought that to their, to their front, I think it would be a good idea, and I agree, moving it out a year, keeping this in as a placeholder. I'm, I'm on board with that. But I would really like, a task force sounds good to me, or a referendum where the, the community really has input into what happens. I also think we're, we're short-sighted. We don't have that strategic plan. And I, I'm not a person who likes to do crisis management. I like to know when something is coming. And so that we can, you know, so that the community also knows that we're on top of that. So I would really like to see a, a written plan based on either current or it's hard to forecast what's going to happen in the future, but planning ahead for elementary, middle, and high school so that the community has an idea that we're not going to overcrowd our schools and that students, you know, that's our number one priority. We want students to be safe, we want them to have opportunities. And one of the ways you do that is you make sure that, that schools can provide that for students. And that means you don't have schools that are overcrowded.
So that's two people who would like to move the additions, the three additions as a placeholder down a year to provide us the next nine months to have a conversation. Mrs. Ombi, what do you, Ms. Ombi, what do you think?
So I'm not opposed to that. I guess my, my struggle is, at Mr. Kelly's point, we're kind of muddying the waters with redistricting in the CIP because it is hard to, to look at them separately because we had high school expansions in our CIP. And our funding partners asked us to take them out and asked us, quite frankly, to, to mitigate capacity issues with redistricting. So for me, if we push it out a year, what are we going to do to mitigate capacity now?
I think we have to have that discussion then. So can we, can we have that discuss, can we have that discussion then and, and just talk about the, because this is really a financial planning document. And I realize that they are connected, but at some point we have to segregate them so that we can discuss them independently. So you're.
I'm not opposed to pushing it out a year.
Dr. Beers?
I, I support the, the idea of pulling it out. And I do, I completely agree with the notion that strategic planning, long-range planning, however you call it, we have, we have to do that. And so I, and if that would give us some time to get it, feedback, get, you know, look at it more closely, checking out our capacity and how many empty classrooms we have, you know, over the next year, I think would be, would be helpful.
Moving it down, it's not pulling it out, moving it down. So it's still a placeholder in the, yeah. Hummel, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that. If, I, I think we don't have enough data right now. So for me, for instance, this is very helpful, the document, you know, I haven't even had a chance to look at it. But this is the document that we just received that really does an in-depth view of what our capacity is at the three high schools. And is there any wiggle room? What can, what creative things can we do? I want to know what the community feels about schools that are twelve-hundred students versus fifteen-hundred students. I, I want to know, are they okay with that? Or, or, I, I would like to know that. I, I don't think that seven people can be making a decision about that without really feeling that the community has had an opportunity to, to let us know what they're thinking. And that goes for the trailers. I really would like to know, how comfortable is this community with sixteen trailers at our high school? I just, I want to know that. What's the comfort level of our, of our community with that?
I'm not opposed to pushing the items out either. I think having more dialogue with the community is important in making these decisions. I'm not opposed to that either.
So if we agree to push everything out and just keep it in the same order, push everything out, do we push also then elementary and middle and central office out as well? Or do we hold that steady?
Personally?
Yes.
I think we hold that steady because we, we have those needs. The concern I have with our elementary is that I think we need an elementary school before two thousand twenty-eight. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, if we're, if we're being honest with ourselves, we look at our numbers today, you know, that's, that's over ten years from now, and that's a long time. And I don't, if, if we're looking at growth at the high school level, that's going to happen at the elementary level as well. And I'm just, you know, concerned that that's, that's too far out. So I know the, our funding partners might. So I, I know the, our funding partners might, are gonna have to choke on a big number at some point, but, um, that's just the reality of situations from our perspective, or actually from this board member's perspective, is I think, I think twenty twenty-eight is, uh, way too far out for elementary school.
I mean, we already have a trailer at one elementary school, and we already-
And we probably should have more, probably should have some at Stonehouse. I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's where a lot of growth is going in the northern end of the county. So, so I don't know that we put it in the next five years, but I wouldn't mind seeing it in six, that, hey, we, you know, this is, this is an emerging need, and it's, it's gonna be there. Um, you know, it's gonna be there, probably after I'm not here, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that we should, we owe the community and we owe our funding partners to put on their radar screen, and we can't let them think that we're not gonna need an elementary school until twenty twenty-eight, 'cause that's just not, the way I look at the numbers, that's just not reality.
Dr. Heron, do you feel like you have enough clarity to move forward on that piece of it? There's some other things we need to discuss, but-
Yeah, I think, I think we move high schools out by one year, we keep everything else the same, and that clarifies what we're really asking for in two thousand and nineteen, which is the only piece that's really voted on at this point in time.
Um, okay, so I think, we didn't have any questions about maintenance, we've just moved the new construction out a year to allow us the opportunity to have a conversation with the community on trailers, high schools, elementary schools, and, and then also, of course, most importantly, our funders. But, um, I, I wanted to, um, just state that I'm not sure I was comfortable with the order that things were in, so we don't have to have that conversation now, 'cause we have to have this other conversation first, but I just wanted to flag that, that, um, I'm not sure that expanding Jamestown first was the right order, and so, um, if we find ourselves in this situation again, hopefully we can have that discussion and look at some data that might inform our thinking about, yeah, about. So then that, Ms. Hummel holding up the dizzying spreadsheet.
True.
Um, Dr. Beers, can you, can you, just for the purpose of so citizens and the people in the room understand the difference between utilization and capacity? Mrs. Young asked last meeting to talk about usage in these schools, you know, so capacity is a fixed number, utilization fluctuates based on a lot of varieties, it's a more, it's not a stable number to use. So can you just, just a little, like, utilization one-on-one?
I think especially at the secondary level, it becomes a, a big distinction, because capacity, actual capacity of each of our schools is based on the number of core classrooms times twenty-five, and that's where we get a capacity number that stays stable when a school is built and throughout the life of the school. But when we look at the actual usage of the classroom, it depends on the programs that are being operated within a school. Special education classrooms, um, contained, self-contained classrooms have less students and they're not a twenty-five-to-one ratio. If we, programs like Pathways, they take up special space, so the actual utilization can be very different by school, depending on the programs that are there. And so what we've provided you was a very simple walkthrough of each building to give you a sense of the utilization of each of our high schools right now. And you will notice that, that Jamestown, that still is, we do have a capacity issue there for next year, uh, is being very fully used, almost every room.
Um, but there might be a little bits of space in, yeah, the other schools or-
There is, there's space in Lafayette High School, and that does not include in the nine-hundred building information that we provided.
Okay.
And there also is space at War Hill, but War Hill, as Mr. Kelly rightly pointed out, is growing more quickly.
Yes.
And therefore, it's space that we feel will, will fill more quickly than Lafayette High School, based on the projections that we currently have.
Right, that part of the county is growing. Okay, so, um, if I, so I think we're all ready to, are we all comfortable with taking action then on the fourteenth on the CIP as we-
Uh-huh.
At nodding, yeah, okay. Um, all right, before we move on to the next agenda item, I just wanna talk about the CIP a little bit, because I've, um, talked to several people about it, um, and I think that it's important to remember that, um, this division has been working hard on improving the CIP, uh, process for a number of years. Three years ago, we commissioned and, and received the Faithful and Gould Report, the Facility Conditions Index, is that, yeah, is that right? And so that gave us some really good data to look at, how to make sure that we are maintaining our really well-maintained buildings, uh, into perpetuity, that in addition to the process that Dr. Heron and Mr. Schnipes and formerly Ms. Berta led to, uh, poll, um, the division in a more systematic way and develop criteria. So that's been a really improved, um, data-driven, thoughtful, uh, process with a lot of input across the division. We also recently switched from a five-year to a ten-year plan to be more transparent with our funders, because CIPs are universally five years out, but sometimes when we need, know we need space ten years from now, so we did that, so the, I, I hear, I take your point, Mr. Kelly, about the whole concept of needing high school space is new to the community, but it certainly isn't new to us or to our funders. Um, we also, in addition to adding, going to ten years from five years to be more transparent about our needs, we switched at the county's request from a spring adoption of our CIP to a December adoption of our CIP to allow for more thoughtful planning on the funder's part and allow them to build our needs into, um, the budget, and I have to say that they have been really good about that. Um, and it is, um, and, and the James City County in particular, their financial management team and, and Mr. Hill, um, has worked with this division, uh, I think more cooperatively since we moved to December, although that did happen with a little, some bumps, but, um, it's been an improvement. Um, our strategic plan, that just finished, and, um, Mr. Murphy presented to us at our last meeting, did not include operations of, you know, facilities, goals. I, I suspect that that will change in the future, I'm just guessing, Dr. Heron, is that, you know?
There, we're in the process of starting to develop a new plan that will take us through the next five years, and, and yes, there should be efficiency and effectiveness piece that would include operations.
And, and then I think one of the things, we did the Faithful and Gould Report, which really helped us benchmark our existing facilities against others, and grade them, if you will. But we don't, still don't have a really strong sense of benchmarking ourselves against other divisions, whether it comes to athletic facilities or educational facilities or, or other, or other facilities. So I just say that to kind of make the point that we're not there yet, we could be more strategic and thoughtful about our planning, and we could, um, uh, we could certainly improve, but we have laid a lot of groundwork in the last three years to get us there, and I don't want anyone to forget that that has happened. So, are there any other comments about the CIP before we move on? So, adopting that the next meeting? The next is eight point zero-two, review policy, G-C-B-A-A Professional Staff National Board Certification Recognition. We've seen this a couple times. Dr. Heron, do you wanna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only reason this is back, as, as Mr. Kelly suggested, taking the language off last time, that put in a certain number of years, because we know that's about to change, so it's the only reason it's on action as our next agenda, as opposed to action tonight, was that change of one line. So we could certainly move it to next meeting, or-
Any questions before we move this to action for next meeting, Mr. Heron?
No, I would, I would, I would have been fine with it.
We'll put it to the consent agenda.
But it doesn't make, it doesn't make a big deal.
So that, can it go on consent next meeting?
It's a work session next meeting, so action?
Okay. All right, thank you. That's why. Um, so item eight point zero-three, review policy, G-C-D-A, conditions of employment. We've seen this one before, two, I believe.
Mr. Baker, I believe, is going to speak to this one. This is a new change as well from last time?
Have we not seen this one? Okay, yeah.
I believe there was some change in the language to do with the-
Ms. Taylor, have you seen this?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, uh, this, uh, policy, G-C-D-A, conditions of employment, the last portion of the policy deals with cost of fingerprinting, criminal background checks, and negligent checks. Uh, with our current policy, um, the applicants and the new employees pay for it themselves, so we've recommended a change for the lowest-paid employees, uh, of our district, that, uh, we will incur that cost, uh, and that would be for employees on grade, uh, one through grade seven. Some of those types of employees include bus drivers, to, um, uh, cafeteria monitors, cafeteria workers, custodians, bus aides, that we would incur the cost, uh, for those applicants and employees going forward.
This is one of the many things that maybe was a barrier to getting bus drivers on board, because employees had to pay this upfront themselves, and so that's where we're making a distinction between levels of employee in this policy.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Baker, how much does it cost for, uh, fingerprinting, criminal record check, and abuse and neglect check?
It's total thirty-five dollars, it's twenty-five dollars for the fingerprints, ten dollars for, for Child Protective Services. It's a thirty-five dollar total charge.
Okay, thank you.
So, so our reasoning was that for some, some, that is really a hardship for, for some people at those lower grades, they would have to work almost an entire day to, to just pay for their background check.
What I've seen, what I've seen is, uh, they pass the drug test or whatever, they, the, the employee picks it up, but-
Are you okay with it?
I'm okay with it, but it's just, it's just other things and-
Any other questions? Okay, so this'll go on our agenda for adoption at the next meeting? Okay. The next item is eight point zero-four, Appointment to Twenty-First Century and Career-Ready Advisory Committee? Just an application. Uh, do you wanna talk about this, Dr. Heron, or?
Doesn't have the red marks.
Okay, all right, so this'll transfer to action at the next meeting, unless anyone has any questions. Eight point zero-five, purchase of elementary school laptops. Dr. Heron?
This is, uh, our annual elementary refresh for laptops at the elementary school level. Mr. Landers is here to take us through the agenda this evening. Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Uh, we are asking your consideration for approval of purchasing elementary teacher-use laptops as part of our ongoing refresh program. Uh, the timing of this purchase was to allow the assignment of the laptops with Windows X to the elementary teachers in the early spring. Uh, that'll give them time to become familiar with Windows X, the new interface, before we upgrade the elementary student laptops, which would occur next summer. Uh, it also provides for a special year-end pricing consideration from Lenovo. The purchases request is to provide five hundred teacher laptops for a total purchase price of three hundred fifty-nine thousand five, excuse me, five hundred dollars. The funds are allocated within the technology budget, and we will make use of a state-vita contract to Lenovo.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a, uh, 'cause I've always wondered this myself, um, the, um, this is the purchase.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you tell me the difference cost-wise if we lease those, knowing that, um, the life of a laptop, um, if you're lucky, if it's used a lot, is three years, three, you know, three to four years, something? I'm just curious, um, if we leased them instead of buying them.
We have looked at the lease model a number of times, most recently this past spring in the February, March timeframe, and really, there is no cost benefit to leasing. Basically, they take the cost of the device, they divide it by three, divide it by four, pass that cost directly to us, and we actually lose some flexibility if we loosen, move into a lease model that we currently benefit from.
So, um, and do you, um, my assumption also is when you purchase these, um, you also purchase the three-year warranty with those, or, or how, how does that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we purchase matching warranty to provide for the life of the device.
All right.
Other questions for Mr. Landers? Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
On the agenda. Great. So that brings us to action items. Nine point zero-one, Title Four Federal Program Grants Application. May I have a motion, please?
Chair, I approve the Title Four Federal Program Grants Application for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Thank you for that motion, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any discussion?
Second that emotion?
No, that motion.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none? Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. Brings us to nine point zero-two, purchase of James Blair Middle School Technology Infrastructure Items. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of purchase request for technology infrastructure items to support James Blair Middle School construction to Optech in the amount of three hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Any discussion? Hearing none? Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point zero-three, Contract Award for the Security Camera System Upgrade. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we award the contract for the Security Camera System Upgrade to Office Pro Technologies in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Can I have a second?
Second.
Hummel, any discussion, questions?
Is that another way of saying Optech? It's the same, it's the same company, right?
Mrs. Young?
Yeah, I still, I'm, I'm looking at the background here, it says, this is my same question that came up last month, and, and I mean, our last meeting, it says, "The School Division Safety and Security Committee is charged with continuous monitoring of the division's security equipment, practice, and procedure." Okay, I'm on board for that. I still am worried about continuous monitoring, but that's probably to be held at another time, a discussion about that, but, okay. Just wanna make my point. I made it.
Duly made.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None? Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. Brings us to nine point zero-four, Revised Policy, BFC Policy Adoption. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we revise policy, BFC, policy adoption.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none? Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. That brings us to item ten point zero-one, WJCC two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Equity Series Two, Liter, Call-in Literacy. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're pleased to, to bring to you some information about literacy. Literacy is one of the key ways in which we break down barriers for students, and tonight, Dr. Moore is going to give us a, a really good overview of the literacy instruction that we're providing for all students, uh, to meet their needs. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Heron. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to present as a part of the second season of the Equity Through Engagement Series on behalf of the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. This evening, I am honored to present you with an overview of our WJCC Elementary Literacy Program and the work that we are doing to close achievement gaps for our lowest-achieving students. This presentation will provide an outline of the key literacy practices that we use to provide all students with what they need in order to be successful. Our literacy program is designed to provide a solid foundation to all learners. In previous Equity presentations, we have seen highlights of the specific interventions that we provide to specific groups of students. Our WJCC literacy program is designed to provide our lowest achieving students, regardless of their subject, subgroup distinction, with the best possible first-time instruction. We do this so that the more specific interventions that they receive from other programs can be layered on top of a strong initial foundation. At the end of this presentation, I will present a few data points that highlight the movement our division is making towards closing achievement gaps for specific groups of students. The key literacy practices that I will now outline allow us to meet the needs of every learner. Our literacy program is not a basal reading program, nor is it a product that comes from a package. We use a balanced approach to literacy, which means that we don't prescribe to one single method of literacy instruction. Instead, we integrate several modalities of instruction so that we can give the right amounts of support to help students become independent readers, writers, and thinkers. Inside our classrooms, teachers are providing clear and direct skill instruction using authentic texts that can be found in a library or bookstore. We integrate reading and writing instruction so that students are not only writing about what they read, but they also learn how to turn their reading skills into writing strategies. Our teachers also reinforce literacy skills in small group settings. This allows them to address the varying learning needs that are found in today's classrooms. Small group instruction is one of the hallmarks of our instructional method and is the key to closing achievement gaps. We do not deliver a one-size-fits-all instructional program. We tailor our instruction to meet the needs of our students. Our journey began in two thousand fourteen with a renewed focus on our WJCC literacy philosophy and professional development on direct skill instruction using authentic texts. Teacher teams began to meet during their common planning times to discuss the learning outcomes of their lessons. With support from their school-based literacy teams, teachers also identified teaching resources that would best support the learning outcomes. In two thousand fifteen, our professional development efforts concentrated on small group instruction. We emphasize the ways that small groups can provide differentiated instruction to students. Differentiation is the cornerstone for meeting the learning needs of all students. Through differentiation in small group instruction, teachers are able to use materials with varying readability levels so that students have access to the right reading levels. They use appropriately leveled texts to practice the skills that they are learning. Teachers can also adjust and provide additional levels of instructional support to students during small groups. This creates a learning environment where all learners can move towards their goals for independent reading and writing. In two thousand sixteen, we continued our concentration on small group instruction and placed a greater emphasis on using informal assessments to pinpoint exactly where teaching should begin. Using assessments to guide instruction further strengthens the supportive nature of small group instruction. And this year, we added a focus on writing instruction. The VDOE is in the process of revising the K-12 English standards, and we use this as our opportunity to stay ahead of the curve and provide a revised writing curriculum that emphasizes the integration of reading and writing. This year, we also completed a major overhaul of our Elementary Writing Assessment Plan. This change de-emphasizes the focus of writing to a prompt and instead encourages authentic writing opportunities that can be embedded into the curriculum throughout the year. Let's take a peek into a few classrooms to see the literacy focus in action.
We find that with modeling with real text, it gives them the same impression of when they are in their Just Write Book reading. We get a much more organic, real, authentic way that children are able to then take it and put it into their own book that they're reading. The connection with readers and writers is a huge part of what we do here because good readers are also good writers. If we're, if we're doing all of our strategies that we need to for reading, we can also apply the same strategies as for writing. We can't function without small group instruction here at James River. Our children are reading on a vast spectrum of levels, so it is super important to have small group instruction daily because you need to meet the needs of your children and where they are reading. If you don't, you will not have success in moving children forward and getting them to become readers as learners. There's no way.
In two thousand fifteen, we decided to make our literacy instructional philosophy more tangible and created an Elementary Literacy Program Guide. The Program Guide serves as a resource for teachers and explains the nuts and bolts of how to teach children using a balanced literacy approach. This Program Guide serves as the foundation for every decision we make about literacy instruction. One of the major changes that the Elementary Literacy Program Guide has allowed us to make is with the way that we deliver professional development to teachers. The research is clear. One of the highest effects on student achievement is the instructional capacity of our teachers. We have some of the best teachers in WJCC, and they bring a wide range of expertise with them to their classrooms every day. Because of the Literacy Program Guide, schools have been able to request specific professional development topics that suit the perspectives of their staff and students. The Literacy Program Guide ensures that all professional development is aligned under the same instructional philosophy regardless of topic. The Literacy Program Guide also allows WJCC to maintain consistency in professional development content while allowing individual schools to modify the learning formats to fit the adult learning styles and needs. Just as teaching with a one-size-fits-all mentality is no longer an accepted practice, providing professional development with that same one-size-fits-all manner is no longer the only option. The Reggie Routman Reading and Writing Connections Professional Development at Laurel Lane Elementary is just one example of how a school has used the Literacy Program Guide to choose a specific sustained professional development focus. This video highlights the work that they are doing and is just one example of the many extraordinary professional development opportunities that are taking place in our elementary schools.
This sustained PD initiative has been fantastic. This is my eleventh year teaching, and this is the first year that I've had or been part of a sustained PD initiative. What I really like about it is that I know what to expect when I'm going to these professional developments, and it's really nice to have the different PDs build on each other, and it helps to put together the experience of those who have been in the classroom for a while and those who are new to the profession, who may have some ideas coming fresh out of school that we are not offered to. If nothing else, it creates a shared dialogue amongst colleagues within the school buildings, and especially when there's a professional development that happens amongst the district. It just builds upon itself, which is really helpful when it comes to planning and executing these things in your classroom, because I think sometimes when it's a one-and-done PD, it gets practiced once and then it gets let go, but having to cycle back and revisit this over and over again, I think is really valuable. With the Reggie Routman Reading and PD that we've been doing, it's made a big difference for my students. I mean, even as early as yesterday, when I was connecting the nonfiction text features that we were learning about reading to the informational writing we were getting ready to do, you know, you kind of saw that light go off with some of them. So that's a really wonderful thing for them to be able to make those connections and understand the big picture.
At the classroom level, we monitor the progress of individual student learning through numerous division-wide reading assessments, such as the Developmental Reading Assessment, or DRA Two, the Phonological Awareness and Literacy Screener, also known as the PALS Assessment, and the Measure of Academic Progress, or MAPS Assessment. Ultimately, the impact of our literacy program is judged by student performance on the English SOL tests. I have a few charts that highlight the gains that we have made in closing the achievement gaps between specific groups of students since we began our division-wide emphasis on literacy in two thousand fourteen. The next four slides are all formatted in the same manner and show gap trends for specific demographic groups of students. I will take a moment to emphasize that our WJCC literacy program does not provide support to any one demographic group. Rather, our literacy program is designed to support the learning of all students, including our lowest achieving students, regardless of their demographic classification. The large chart at the top of the slide indicates the division-wide gap trend based on results from all English SOL tests in the given timeframe. This includes the elementary, middle, and, and of course, English SOL tests, and provides an overall picture of the work that we are doing as an entire division. In the school year before we began our elementary emphasis on literacy, there was an overall gap of thirty percentage points for our African-American subgroup. The gap was reduced to twenty-three percentage points, which is an eight percent point reduction after accounting for rounding of decimal points. Underneath the overall trend chart, you'll also see the individual tables of SOL pass rates of students in each elementary grade level. The smaller group sizes of the individual grade levels allow for wider variability from year to year. However, the data from each of the elementary grade levels is showing movement in the right direction towards closing the achievement gaps. These data on our economically disadvantaged group do not show a large reduction in the gap, but the movement is still going in the right direction. We have moved from a twenty-six percent gap in two thousand thirteen to a twenty-three percent gap in the overall division data last spring. The gap analysis of our Students with Disabilities group presents the area for most opportunity. We are working even more closely with our partners in the Department of Special Education to identify the areas of our literacy model that can be strengthened to increase support for our students with disabilities. This year, there has been a greater emphasis on removing barriers that might prevent our special education teachers from attending grade-level planning meetings. We are also taking a closer look at how we can encourage the transfer of learning to the general education classroom from the Wilson Language Live and Passport Reading Interventions. Our largest gains in closing the literacy achievement gap for a specific group of students has been with our English language learners. I must express a cautionary reminder that when we drill down to the individual grade-level data for some of our groups, the small number of students can cause wide variability from year to year in the pass rates of that particular group. When the number of students is, in the group is smaller, each individual student can have a greater impact on the pass rate for the entire group. In this case, even though the grade-level data changes drastically, drastically from year to year, the overall division-wide trend of reducing the achievement gap is noteworthy. In closing, this graphic is not only a great visual of how we in WJCC use a balanced literacy approach to provide our lowest achieving students with a strong foundation of high-quality literacy content and instruction. The graphic also exemplifies the work we have done as a division to align our efforts and work together using a solid literacy philosophy. The positive movement that we are making towards reducing achievement gaps cannot only be attributed to one individual factor, but rather rests on the shoulders of every educator and program who has the opportunity to support student learning. Thank you for your time this evening, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Moore?
Yes, can you go back to the slide that was Students with Disabilities?
Ma'am.
Okay, so the gap increase.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the bottom line is Students with Disabilities. Doesn't that show a decrease there?
No, ma'am.
Say that again.
Lines are getting farther apart from left to right, so, so on the right side, it's eighty-seven and forty-six.
Right, I see that.
Eighty-five and forty-nine, so that number is closer now to the left, but it's increasing.
Basically, we still have work to do in, in all of these areas, and especially with our students with disabilities.
Right, and I, I know that that's a difficult area, but, Mr. Thornt, explain this to me later.
Ms. Ombi?
Madam Chair, I just want to applaud you for your, the Division for their efforts, and certainly appreciate the transparency, and, and while there's definitely an opportunity for growth, particularly in this subgroup, I think overall, we're making strides, and so I look forward to, to more outside-of-the-box thinking and creativity and finding ways to, to help all of our students achieve and to mitigate those.
Ms. Ombi, Mr. Kelly?
So, so these graphs are the same groups of students as they track through the system? So it would be from, so, so what group of students are we looking at here?
So in this particular graph, we are looking at the students who were in grades three, four, and five at the elementary level, six, seven, and eight at the middle school level, and the, and of course, at high school in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and then the group of students that were in those particular grade levels in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So this is not cohort data. We're not looking at the exact same group as they move through the school years. We're looking at the data from that particular grade level for that particular testing year.
Gotcha. Thank you. The other thing, too, the video, the one thing that struck me about the video is that you had a, had a teacher talking about her professional development and said that they're being exposed, from the younger teachers being exposed to newer ideas, and I thought that was really very, very important concept, that, you know, just because you have more experience doesn't mean you have, don't have something to learn from the newer teachers, and I thought that was, that was a real good point, so appreciated that.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, Dr. Moore, I, I also applaud what you and, and the Division has done. The gaps are getting smaller, and they get hard, you know, the smaller they get, the harder they, they, they get to remove, but to me, this is very impressive, and clearly, the district has, has adopted a really balanced, sensible approach to, to literacy development and also instruction. I just, a question I had, it's probably, it, it may be more in the area of special ed, but I'm curious, when, how long has the Wilson program been used in, in Williamsburg with special ed kids?
I don't want to misspeak.
Ms. Bujoir, I think we'll probably be able to...
Because I, I always thought that, that was kind of a, a pretty, pretty standard instrument, instructional program for special ed kids.
Three years ago, we did a training so that we could have at least one teacher at every elementary and middle school that was trained. Last year was the first year that they could work with more than one student because the Wilson training is very intensive, and you go to the training and then you spend year, one year, working with one student and being observed before you're fully certified. So last year was actually our first year with full implementation.
So, are, is, are, are you hoping that over time, the number of students who are worked with will increase, you know, as we get more teachers trained in that area, or can work with, with two students?
The Wilson program is designed for a very specific set of needs for students, so we do have some criteria that is used to appropriately identify students for that program. We have looked at possibly increasing it. We have not determined that feasibility at this time.
Dr. Beers, I think it'll come down to staffing and budget and looking at the impact of the program and whether it's really having a good effect on our students.
What's really, what's so critical about that, especially with, with kids with disabilities, learning disabilities particularly, is that one-on-one is, it's absolutely, I mean, to me, it's money in the bank. When, when, when you have a student who is having, you know, really severe problems in literacy, that's a, that's major. That's, and I know, I know it costs money, but, but it's like pay now, we're gonna end up paying later, so I, I, I commend that, well, all of you as well.
Ms. Hummel?
This is, thanks for all you do. I just think the reading specialists, it's magic what you can accomplish for our children in, in an amazingly short amount of time, especially the English is, the ESL student, it's just really impressive to me. What is authentic writing? When you, when you kept, maybe that's just a new term for me, but if you could just, in layman's...
Absolutely. So, traditional writing might be writing to a prompt, or where a teacher assigns a topic. And authentic writing would be for more, more purposes that you would see in the real world. At the younger elementary levels, we try to, to really instill that love of being an author, and so we use a lot of text and, and mentor text from authors to, to build that feeling in students. And then as students get older, you might see more things like responding about a book, a recommendation in a blog format, or something that you would see more in the real world rather than just a worksheet or a prompt.
Is it like journaling?
It could be journaling. That would be one part of it, absolutely. It could be journaling, that would be one part of it, absolutely. Or creating texts, creating booklets, creating things that a student would feel that they could put that on a bookshelf in a library or in a bookstore.
Can I make one comment about that, just sort of... As I used to tell my students, a grocery list is very much authentic writing as well.
You would've been a fascinating reading specialist.
I say I was.
Dr. Moore, thank you very much. We appreciate your work, and I'd like to echo Ms. Zonby's comment about transparency. Obviously, there's some work to be done, but we appreciate knowing about the successes and also the opportunities. And as I tour elementary schools, it's wonderful to see this in action. And we just saw it in action the other day at Clara Bird. So it's neat to see that what you think you're doing, you're doing, it's happening on the ground. So anyway, thank you. Anything else before we... Thank you very much, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to 10.02 James Blair Middle School Progress Update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to bring you a progress update on James Blair Middle School, and Mr. Snipes is going to introduce our special guests this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, in March of 2016, the board awarded the construction management services to McDonnell, Polly, and Peck, MBP. One of the scopes of that RFP was for them to present to the board updates of the James Blair Middle School. And tonight, we have representatives from MBP here to do just that. In addition, we also have the principal of James Blair Middle School, Mr. Ty Harris, who will also be providing an update on things that he has been working on. So I wanted to invite Ty up and MBP up, but MBP first to provide their update.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the board, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Jim Yatzik with MBP, and as Mr. Snipes mentioned, our firm was hired to help oversee the construction of James Blair Middle School. And I'm joined by Eric Caldwell. Eric is our very capable onsite construction manager, and Eric is the person who is responsible for making sure that the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing on a daily basis. So I'm gonna give a little bit of a brief overview of the project, and following that, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, and he's gonna walk you through a little bit of the most recent progress with construction out there. So just some brief information about the project, 109,000 square feet on the existing James Blair Middle School project. If you recall, the early part of the project involved demolition of part of the old building to make room for the new building. So that was accomplished in the earlier phase, and construction on the new James Blair is currently underway. Just information about the building, it's pretty typical construction project, typical construction for a school project, structural steel frame, masonry at areas like the gymnasium, some of the back-of-house type areas. Interior side, it has some drywall partitions and masonry partitions, as well as some high-end type finishes, very durable finishes like terrazzo. So be a very aesthetically pleasing school when all said and done. We do have some renderings to show later on in the presentation that Eric will go over. Site work, there will be minimal improvements on the site. They're gonna be redoing the ball field that is currently out there, new parking lot, new bus loop. The city of Williamsburg is actually doing the roadwork to expand Long Hill for Turn Lanes into the school, so we've been coordinating with the city to make sure that those projects meet up successfully. Some other unique features of the project, flexibility really is the key, the way that this school was designed, it's gonna offer a great deal of flexibility with the way that classrooms could be opened up, even the lockers in the couriers, the class areas can be moved to open space up for various school activities. So the principal and staff is gonna have a lot of flexibility with the type of programming and education that could take place inside the facility. Few other features, one I think is pretty neat is concepts, they call it wall talkers, but it's basically a very large markerboard, kind of a floor-to-ceiling type concept that will be on the walls where various activities and instruction can take place. And then, your typical multimedia, I think that is still being worked out with the school's IT staff. And then, just last feature to mention is that there's a shared stage in between the gymnasium cafeteria, so again, that will allow flexibility for some of the type of activities that are taking place in those areas. Just briefly on the budget, the Phase 1B, which is what we're in now, is the general construction Phase 1A is what we termed for the demolition portion. The Phase 1B general construction contract was just under $22 million. Change orders to date is $48,000, a little over $48,000. So on a percentage basis, if you take that as a percentage of the construction contracted, it only comes out to about .22%, which is very favorable. Our goal is always zero change orders, of course, but there are changes that take place. Sometimes they're programmatic things where you wanna make changes to the program while construction is taking place. So that accounts for some of the changes. There's also been some unforeseen condition-type issues. But overall, we're very pleased with where the project is from a change order standpoint, so in good shape with the budget. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, and he's gonna talk a little bit more about progress to date.
Jim, and thanks for having us this evening. I'm gonna kind of review kind of what's taken place over the past year and a half. So here was an existing aerial photo. The left half is the actual central office, and the right half was the part that was demolished to make room for the new school. All right, part of the renovations of the Phase 1A was a new entrance into the central office, and it was actually relocated to the other end of the building. We also have a new reception area, as well as a new mechanical room, all the equipment in there to operate the buildings. All right, and here's a rendering of the final product. You have the central office on the left side, and then the right side is the new school building. Here's the typical first-floor plan. The bottom right is actually Unit A. It's a three-story portion. Admin area on the first floor, and the second and third floors are some classroom space, as well as the resource center. And the top-right portion is your classroom hub, and that's also three levels, so there's one level for each grade level. Top-left is the food service area in the brown. Green is the auditoria with the stage moving across to the gym and then the locker rooms. The bottom-left portion in the brown is the fine arts. Here's an aerial photograph from December of 2016. Right side, you can kind of see the outline of the raised portion of the building. And then, above the central office, you can see where some of the foundation work is starting for the new school. A month later in January, you can see a significant amount of the foundation work is underway, and it's actually a pretty good opportunity to see the shape of the building. Two months later, so we're in mid-spring here, you can see some slab-on-grade has been poured, that portion, and that's towards the top right, is the gymnasium, the music area, and the locker rooms. Down towards the bottom of the slide, you can see where the classroom portion have walls up to the second floor already. Early summer, you can see there's significant height to the building. We actually have the decking over top of the gymnasium. If you look kind of the bottom left, you can see the area was cleared and rough graded for the new parking lot. The end of summer, we've got the second-floor deck in the classroom area. They've got the decking on the gymnasium, and then you can see at the bottom of the slide how the parent drop-off and the parking facility is taking shape. Here was September, we have the roof on the gymnasium, and that's important to allow for storage and staging of some of the more weather-sensitive materials. If you look towards the top of the slide, you can see we're already doing some grading around the ball field. And then, again, towards the bottom of the slide, you can see we've got some curb and gutter going in around the parking lot. November, decking, the roof decking for the classroom portion is in place, and you can actually kind of make out a little bit of the equipment curbs up there. And under the blue tarp is the material for the classroom roof. And you can see there's a little bit of work between Cooley Field and the school, a little bit of work on the bus loop. Here's some of the architectures, architects' renderings of the finished product, as well as some progress photos. This is the classroom portion, and in the photograph, I'm standing in one of the classrooms looking through the collaboration space to the other side where the classrooms are with the windows. This view is standing where the gathering stairs are, kind of where the main entrance is into the school, looking through the auditoria up onto the stage, and then through the opening, the dark opening is actually the gymnasium. And this, the point of view for this photograph is actually standing on the stage, looking through the auditoria towards the front entrance, and gathering stairs as well, just by the lift. This is the structure you can see for the roof. Couple elevation photographs, this is the north end of the classroom area. The yellow is actually a spray-applied polyurethane foam, meant as the thermal barrier. And in the large opening is where there's a three-story curtain wall window system that will be installed. Here's a photograph of the student entrance coming off of the bus loop. See some of the brickwork over to the left of the classroom. And a very important part at this point is the building envelope. And it's important so that if, once we get the windows in, the brickwork up, and the roof on, we can start conditioning the space so we can actually start installing the interior finishes. Some key milestones, Notice to Proceed was in October of 2016. They've gone through the winter, spring, and summer, putting up the main structure of the building, which includes structural steel and structural masonry. Another key component is the start of the roofing system, and we're well underway. And the interior stud walls actually started yesterday, so we're looking pretty good as well. Another major milestone will be in February with the startup of the ventilation system for the building. Eighteen, we have substantial completion. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Yatzik or Mr. Caldwell? Mechanical room, that was created for the new central office, is that just for central office, or does that impact the new James Blair?
No, it's just for the central office itself, yeah. And what, some of the components were actually relocated, like the cooling tower was salvaged and moved into place. And then, some of the stuff that was in the photograph, the pumps and the piping, that was all new, that was married into the existing system in the school.
Dr. Cal?
Yeah, it's two totally separate.
The change order percentage, I think, is amazing. Obviously, a good indication of the level of management and also working with our contractor to get that...
Working with the contractor, as well as the design, a thorough design definitely helps.
Right. I hope our... So are we on schedule, ahead of schedule, behind schedule?
We're on schedule.
Okay.
As you can see, like, we were starting the interior stud work a few days early, as well as we're well underway with the roofing system. So once we get the roof and the rest of the envelope together, then we can start conditioning the space, and weather kind of comes out of play.
Yeah, and it helps you get more resources working on the inside.
Yeah, so by the end of the year, we should be able to start with the interior finishes.
So nice job with the schedule, nice job with the budget. I hope our safety numbers are equally as good.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, both of you.
I also wanna make notice that Mr. Riley, Hugh Riley, from Oyster Point Construction is also here tonight. He is our contractor on site.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, I'm here to provide a brief update on some of the things of note at James Blair, the staffing, purchasing, and the unveiling of our mascot and school colors. Earlier this month, the WJCC Human Resources Department sent a memo that went to all WJCC staff, informing them of the internal staffing procedure. Application submissions and interviews for internal transfers will be held in stages, with the first stage starting in mid-December. We hope to complete the entire hiring process by the end of April. The building itself is coming along nicely. We have begun the furniture and equipment procurement process. Recently, a couple of teachers and I visited the old donation school in Virginia Beach to get some ideas on transformational furniture. I've been working with content specialists to ensure that we open with necessary equipment, such as music instruments and PE equipment. And now, to the mascot and school color unveiling. We conducted two surveys. One was administered to WJCC students currently in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. A separate survey was for everyone else, students in other grades, staff members of WJCC, and the greater community. We had almost 3,000 votes cast, and our colors were chosen based on the appeal availability. And to announce that the spider couldn't let it go, I still let it go.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Harris?
I will say, over the past few months, I've had an opportunity to meet a number of community members that have attended James Blair. I've also met a lot of people that taught at James Blair, and they really had strong feelings and spoke very passionately about their experience and their joy of being a spider. They really did. And so, we're excited. Our colors will be maroon, silver, and white. We've not finalized the logo yet, but we will be hopefully unveiling that in the spring, early spring.
When will the spirit wear be available?
Soon as possible, just for you.
And we want a really friendly-looking spider for the mascot parade next year.
I think Dr. Carroll has some good ideas on what the mascots should look like.
Are you done, Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly?
First of all, I'd like to welcome you to WJCC. I think it's great for us. The staffing, I'm interested in how the staffing's going to be put together. In the past, I mean, obviously, we have great teachers, but there is a bell curve for those teachers, and I've been concerned in the past that we have kind of put together a quote-unquote "all-star team." When we open up a new school, the principal, you know, hire all the best teachers, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanna kind of feel how that's gonna, how we're putting that together. I'm not sure if you can answer that tonight, but...
We can't answer it specifically tonight, but I know with Dr. Carroll's influence, having been through the process internally before, we've got a lot of heads working together to make the process very fair to all schools.
Okay. And for those teachers, obviously, there's gonna have to be some professional development based upon, you know, the design of this building, the open space, and that kind of thing. Can you speak to how, kind of, what that kind of looks like?
Quite honestly, the programming that we plan to offer at Blair is not unlike any of the other middle schools. We are very lucky to have excellent schools in the division, and so we envision Blair as just being, you know, one more great school. Now, having said that, along with the, to your point, with the hubs and the collaboration space...
space, there will be a learning curve as far as how best to utilize those spaces specifically. And, and there, we will have opportunities to help teachers through that. But as far as the program itself, it will be the same as what currently exists.
If I could just add to that, the program will be similar, but some of the approach will be a little bit different. I know Dr. Carroll is working closely with Mr. Harris in the professional development of teachers. Dr. Carroll, do you want to mention a little bit about where we're going with that?
Sure. We've currently starting, because Blair, we're going to focus on project-based learning, but from our experiences with, at the high school level, the last two years, we believe that as an instructional methodology, project-based learning is something that all our students should have the opportunity to experience and to increase engagement in their classrooms. So, we're currently, starting in December, we have a partnership with William &amp; Mary, deeper learning fellowship that we have approximately 30 middle school teachers who have volunteered and been accepted into this program that's going to be both face-to-face professional development and blended learning over the next six to seven months. And no promises that those teachers will be assigned to Blair, but they're all going to be leaders at all the middle schools as we help to further and expand this idea of project-based learning to all four middle schools next year. But also to your point, you know, how that project-based learning eventually looks at Blair, there are going to be some unique opportunities due to the building and the construction there that may not be up, you know, at the other three, but there'll be different opportunities depending on space and configurations at all four of the middle schools.
Okay, and then another topic, as you develop Mrs. Hummel's friendly spider mascot, is you going to do the same process that you did at Blayton or do you know how that's going to happen yet?
I know we're, we're working with our PR department on how that's going to get designed.
Thank you.
I'm really glad that you're doing the project-based learning across all four middle schools. Thank you for that because that to me is really important, that we're not, we're not just having something happen at one school and then the other three not having the opportunity to take advantage of it. So, I appreciate that, thanks. Anything else for Mr. Harris?
I kind of like the Wild Wild West spider, but I thought that worked in great with robotics. You know, I was thinking of something, and I know it's not very friendly. I was thinking, you know, web of inclusion, there's all sorts of things you can do.
Oh, that's cool.
There's a lot you can do.
I hope you enjoy being a spider. You knew that that was going to be the choice, right? I mean, you knew that going in, right?
I won't go into the personal.
Your struggle, yeah.
We've had lots of conversations the last couple of months.
I just want to know what kind of spider we're dealing with here.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you as you move forward. That brings us to 10.03, presentation of draft middle school redistricting map, so we're going to stick to middle school. Before we begin, I'd like to, before I toss it to Dr. Heron, I'd like to thank the communications folks for sending out really good messaging on and engaging the community. Thank you very much, I thought that was good work and I hope that the community engages online and at the meetings coming up. Then I'd also like to talk about process. So, we have the meeting, the public meeting on the 30th of November and then on, on December 5th. And then we've got our December meeting that will discuss it at our December, and then two January meetings. What, can you remind us what our deadline is for adoption of maps or a map?
We really need to adopt maps by mid-February.
Okay, so at the first meeting in February?
Because students are starting to select their courses for next year. We're developing schedules and we need to have that information to move forward.
So, at the latest, the first meeting in February, so it's, so from this, just for the public's information, this board could discuss the maps at the December meeting and two January meetings for a final vote at the February meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to welcome Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies back this evening to again remind us of the process that we're going through and to present some potential maps for the redistricting of middle school and then of high school. Thank you.
Great, it's great to be here again. I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about the process, kind of start off to refresh. We really started out, months ago, talking about our measurable criteria, what our considerations want to be, what our framework was as we developed options, I'm going to review those today. We'll talk about the analysis and the process that we went through to develop the options. And we'll talk about, you know, the, you know, the options that we developed. We have, I believe, three middle school options and we'll have really six high school options to talk about tonight. Moving forward, this is really the beginning of the transparency and the engagement process. I urge you to just kind of sit here and absorb tonight, we really don't want to talk too much or discuss or debate any of these options yet. This is really the first unveiling of this and we're going to be collecting feedback over the coming weeks so that we can adjust, make changes based on that feedback. And so, we'll have that discussion once we have the options and the feedback together so that we can have a more fruitful conversation about it. Here's our, just our overall timeline, we started in August and as we just alluded to, here we are, this is the, where the rubber hits the road with the community engagement. We did start with our measurable criteria. Where we landed was utilization and so balancing enrollment between the schools, proximity and so we want to minimize the need for student transportation. What we looked at is, is we wanted to get students to their first or second closest schools as much as we could. And longevity, which also is kind of related to utilization, kind of where we thought of that is when we talked earlier about that growth that we see in the War Hill and that area. We want to make sure that if we have the opportunity to maybe leave the utilization low in some of those schools to allow for future growth and not have to come back here and make changes reactively later. The other two additional criteria that we did consider was socioeconomic status, balancing that among all schools and then the neighborhood concept. We wanted to keep neighborhoods together as much as we could. So, what we have here, this is our current, our current boundary scenario and where we have our utilization. We're showing our great advanced utilization for next year. We know we have our overutilization issues at Berkeley, Hornsby and Toono because we're bringing that new middle school online. At high school, we have Jamestown overutilized, we do have some room at Lafayette, War Hills got a little bit of room, but again, we have that growth area up there and so we may not want to adjust that boundary as much as we do the others. Looking at our balance of socioeconomic status, you know, we've got some imbalances that we'd like to try to remedy in both the middle schools and the high schools. This is the process that we went through to develop these options. We built a, a pretty comprehensive tool in Microsoft Excel using some extensions for ArcGIS mapping. And so, what we were able to do in a work session setting is basically cut up the division into about 50 or 60 little pieces and we can assign those pieces to any school and we can instantly see what is the impact on utilization, what is the impact on the socioeconomic balance. And so, that allowed us to, to develop internally, you know, probably 15 or 20 different options that we weeded through and we boiled down to the, the different options that you're going to see today that are most representative and most viable. So, Thursday and next, next week, we'll be presenting these options to the community for large-scale feedback. We're going to start with a presentation much like this where we talk about the process. I will probably throw a couple more slides in there to talk about the student density and those kinds of things like we had in our earlier meetings, just to kind of give everybody the full picture. We'll have the opportunity for community members to fill out an individual questionnaire and share their feedback about the options. What we're asking for is, you know, give us your level of support for each option. You can love all of them or you can hate all of them. And then tell us what your preferred option is. And what we do want is we want productive feedback. We don't want somebody coming up and screaming at us. We want something written down that we can actually take and report. And so, we're not going to have an open mic at these meetings, it's going to be written documentation that we'll be collecting. And then all, all of that feedback will be put into a report and we can analyze it and see what particular segments of the community may think and we can use that to adjust these options. I can't remember, you know, in the last 10 years, the last time that we just took an option through the community engagement process and then didn't tweak it based on feedback from the community. And so, this is not a, this is not a rubber stamp process where we're just, you know, we've got, you know, preconceived notions. This is really an open transparent process where we do want that feedback from the community. Everything that we have is going to be posted online, I believe, later tonight. We actually have the surveys up, we've got the middle school survey and the high school survey now. We'll have a recording of this presentation available tomorrow, we have all the maps available online as well. And we also have a online mapping tool where you can just type in your address and it'll tell you what the school would be in each option for both middle schools and high schools. So, all the information that we have throughout this process is available online for everybody to see. So, again, when we come back in, in December, October, we'll be looking at that, those results in a report format and then any changes that we may make to the recommendation based on that. So, digging into the middle school options.
So, here's our, can I stop you just for a second?
Sure.
For the, for the, for the online survey, is there a deadline for that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a deadline for that?
I think we're leaving it up until December 12th.
Okay, thank you.
So, here's the, the current middle school boundaries and so all these maps are going to be the same color scheme. So, we've got Toono in the green, Hornsby is in the pink, Berkeley is in the purple and then in the option maps, we'll see Blair in blue. You can see our current and projected utilization and current and projected socioeconomic balance for each school and so we're at 112% at Berkeley. And this is based on where the students reside and so it may not exactly match the actual enrollment totals, you know, because there may be special programs here or there, but they're going to be in the ballpark. And what this, what this is, as far as great advancement goes, is we're just taking the students that are already in the system and we're just rolling them forward one year. And so, this 110% or 112% is 870 students that currently live in Berkeley that are in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. The 902 is the fifth, sixth and seventh in the same geographical area. And so, it's not going to line up 100% with the Future Think projections, but those are based on the current boundaries. And so, this is the best data that we have and this is, this is good for, will suffice for planning purposes. One thing that I did want to just, just kind of point out here is that we did have some conversation earlier on about underreporting of socioeconomic status at lower grade levels. And so, you can kind of see here, if we're looking at the current sixth, seventh and eighth graders, those socioeconomic numbers are a little higher when we have the fifth grade and in the eighth grade out. And so, we're kind of showing that that is, that's a true observation.
And those are percentages of students on free and reduced lunch, is that what that is?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, just looking at our first, just our baseline here, again, we have our utilization which is imbalanced. We've got 5.3% of our students that do not attend their first or second closest school currently. And again, we've got our utilization, if everything stays the same, you know, the, we're going to go up at Berkeley, Hornsby is going to be about the same, Toono, 106 to 101%. I mean, again, this is just great advancing and does not have that growth that we would have in the Future Think projections. But we also do show, again, we have that socioeconomic imbalance. We're 53% low SES at Berkeley, we're 22% at Hornsby and 34% at Toono. If we're looking at next year, our overall average is going to be 36%. And so, that's what we're trying to get all three of those schools to is that average. And so, that's our, that's our starting point as we come into these options for middle schools. So, here's our first option. In these maps here, we've got one slide that's going to show and highlight the areas that are changing. The cross-hatched area is going to denote the area that would be moving and the color would match that school. So, this red cross hatch would denote an area moving from Toono to Hornsby. And a blue cross hatch is going to be moving from, you know, from, from anywhere into Blair. And so, in this first scenario, we have some areas right here, just on the southern edge of, of Toono, moving south into Hornsby. We've got some areas here, right, kind of in town, moving from Toono into Hornsby as well. And then we have this large swath here that would be the new established boundary for Blair, along with this area right here, which is Merrimack Trail and some other areas. And so, this is our first option and you can see we've got our current utilization over here. Berkeley currently 112, it would be at 86%. Blair would open at 85%. Hornsby would open at 80, or would, would be at 80 and then Toono would be at 83%. So, we've got some pretty good balance there. You know, we're a little, you know, we've got room for growth there in Toono and Hornsby, we're loading up Blair and Berkeley. If you look at our socioeconomic balance, Berkeley would go from 51 down to 47. Blair would open at 39. Hornsby would go from 20 up to 29%. Toono would stay about the same at 30. And so, every, every one of those schools kind, kind of gets closer to that average, maybe not as, as much as they do in some other scenarios. It does do a very good job of balancing utilization. An additional, about 16% of students would not go to their first or second closest school. And I thought about this and it seems like it's a scary number, but the reason for this is because of our close proximity that we have between Berkeley and Blair. And so, kind of Ford's Colony in here, their first or second closest school is going to be Hornsby or Berkeley. But we've got to get kids to go into Blair from somewhere. And so, looking at this, looking at these, these, these closest school, those proximity numbers, I don't think it's really fair to compare them to the current baseline just because we're opening up a new school and, and the schools are where they are. But it's absolutely fair to compare those to each other as we're looking, looking at these options. Our socioeconomic range is going to be from 29% to 47. Again, everything's kind of getting closer to that average. We don't split any, you know, we don't have any additional neighborhood splits. You know, just looking at the big ones here, Powhatan Secondary stays together, Ford's Colony stays together. We don't, we don't have any splits that, that we've created that didn't already exist at an elementary or maybe at the, at the high school level. We also show our students impacted here, just to, just to kind of illustrate how many students we would be going from school to school. The reason that we want to see this is we just want to see, are we moving large cohorts of kids that we're not singling out smaller groups? Again, this wasn't a criteria, but it's something that will come up in conversation with community members and so that's why we have it on this, on this data. So, our next slide just shows our current boundaries side by side with these proposed boundaries so that you can just kind of compare and contrast and see the differences. So, moving on to option two. So, this one is a little different, we don't have quite the same shape here in as large a boundary for Blair. And we have the, you know, the Merrimack Trail area here would stay at Berkeley. And then we have the area south here, which would, would be a, you know, another detached island zone for Blair. And so, looking at this from a proximity standpoint, whether, whether they get off the bus and they go to Berkeley or they go to Blair, it's their first or second closest school. It's a detached zone, but what it really did is it kind of helped us balance our socioeconomic a little bit better than we had in, in option one. And so, we've got, we've got Berkeley going from 51 to 43. Blair would open again at 39. Hornsby goes from 20 to 32%. And Toono goes from 31 down to 28. With the exception of, of that, you know, that little change at Toono, everybody's kind of moving towards that, that center a little bit better. Our, our overall balance is good, we're 84% at Berkeley, 83% at Blair, 86% at Hornsby, which is our largest school. Toono, 79, room for growth. And again, our overall average, once we have Blair online, is 83%. Does a really good job of balancing our utilization. Our additional, our kind of proximity numbers are a little lower, it's 13% instead of about 15% on the option before. So, socioeconomic range is a little tighter, 28 to 43. And again, we don't have any neighborhood splits in this, in this scenario. Here's our side-by-side comparison. And so, the main differences between one and two are, are basically these areas right here. We've got, I lovingly call it the shark fin, but this is that Merrimack Trail area, area here. And then we have the Grove down here and those are the differences between one and two. So, moving on to option three. So, what this option is, is So what this option is, is this is, this is more of an attempt to not have all that much impact. And so you can see the majority of the changes are going to be in that cross hatch blue area, which are just moves into Blair. We do have a little area up here that would move from Tohono into Hornsby. And we have some areas down here that would move from Berkeley into Hornsby. Our utilization, 83% at Berkeley, 79 at Blair, 84% at, at Hornsby, 85 at Tohono. Berkeley goes from 51 to 52%. In SES, it's up 1%. Looking at Blair, it would open at 43%. Hornsby would go from 20 to 23%. Tohono would go from 31 to 32%.
You've got numbers that aren't consistent in that single slide.
I'm sorry, which?
The socioeconomic status by school ranges from 28 to 43%.
I'll get that one fixed. I apologize.
Okay, so which one's right?
Table's right.
So it's 23 to 52%.
23 to 52.
Okay, thank you.
So this has an additional 19% of the 20% of students would not be attending their closest school in this particular one. And again, that's going to be related to that, just that proximity between Berkeley and Blair. And again, we don't split any, any neighborhoods in this scenario either. So here's our side by side comparison of this one. And that's it for middle schools. Do we, do we have any questions on the, on the presentation or the clarity of the data?
Yeah, before we move on, is this going to be posted online, this presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then also, one more thing about the, the deadline. If people want to reach out to us, I want to encourage them to do so. They can text us, they can call us, they can email us directly. If they want to be anonymous, they can do the survey. But if they want to, so please, any fashion is, we all welcome. So I just want to be really, supermarket, you know, Christmas, or you know, holiday shopping, rather, you know, just whatever. We're, we're, we're here to listen. So Scott suggested that we, because we have three meetings to discuss this particular map, so for middle, middle school only, he suggested that we just take this in. And, and so I, I'd like to propose that we just take this in and then wait for some citizen comment and then come back and discuss January, I mean, December, our two meetings in January and then February.
Just one comment. The maps have better clarity than.
Yeah. So on the, on the, on the website, we have big, so at our community meetings, we're going to have big plots that have detailed roads on them for people to see. And those are also available on the website. And we're just limited by 1080 by 1920 pixels on this presentation. And so.
Yeah, they does have in the half sheets.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's also why we have the, the, the School Finder app on the website. So you can just type in your address and, and find out exactly what the impact is.
Can I ask if you could correct this?
Absolutely.
Before it gets posted?
I'm going to, as soon as I'm done, I'm going to fix it.
And for, oh, got it. Thank you. Thank you. And then also just not, in terms of moving forward in, in information for our next meeting, the little criteria alignment box is very helpful. But when you presented to us early on, you kind of presented a grid where it was kind of alignment ranking. And so that information is, I think, very important to the board. So, you know, you have, you've got utilization in the grid. Longevity, it'd be good to get your sense of how, how well you think these, each score on longevity. And then proximity, maybe which percentage are going to their first, second, and third closest school?
Sure.
Or fourth in some, maybe in some cases. And socioeconomic status, I think, maybe ranked by the delta, maybe?
Sure.
And then also the neighborhood concept. So it says no additional neighborhoods, but are no neighborhoods are split in any of these, correct? Okay. So that would be those kind of, the information is here, but having that.
Yeah, just a comparison table or something.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Does anyone else need any more information before we move on to this? Dr. Heron?
I think if the board has suggestions, comments, questions that they want to ask, obviously, Mr. Leopold's here to take those questions from you, as once you have a chance to study what you're seeing tonight. As we get community input, obviously, your input in the process is really important as well.
If we have questions after we've had a chance to absorb this, we can then convey those to you and you can get.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Being able to absorb the information probably would be helpful. So that brings us then, if there's nothing more on, on middle school, excuse me, that brings us to, to high school. So, thank you.
Okay. So here's our, our current high school boundaries. We have War Hill in the purple, Lafayette in that, that kind of seafoam color. And then we've got our Jamestown in the, the yellow or mustard color. We know we've got our overutilization at Jamestown, kind of our underutilization at Lafayette. And War Hill is, you know, is, is close to, close to 100%. I mean, again, our, our overall average is very high. We're, we're 95 or 96% looking at that data. Our socioeconomic deltas here currently were, were 20%. Low SES at Jamestown, we're 39% at Lafayette. So we've got our, we've got a little bit of imbalance in utilization. As far as proximity, we're pretty good right now. Only half a percent of students don't go to their first or second closest school. And I, I sat here and looked at this puzzled. And it's pretty easy when there's only three schools to not go to your first or second closest school. And so that was kind of where that, where that number came out. What we have here is we actually have two different sets of tables, because as we were developing our options, we really weren't kind of sure where the CIP was going. And so we kind of accounted for a scenario where we have our current capacity. And then we accounted for a scenario with our increased capacity at both Lafayette and, or I'm sorry, at War Hill and Jamestown. And so what you'll see is, you know, if we, if we had those additions and we had them next year, we'd be at 94% at Jamestown. We'd be at 83% at War Hill versus 109 and 94. And so it takes, takes our overall utilization from 90, you know, the, the mid 90s down to the high 80s. I think we may have to discuss, based on our conversation today, how we move forward with, with presenting this publicly based on that CIP direction. So moving to our, our first option here, what these were is, is we kind of attempted to just a minimalistic approach to reduce enrollment at Jamestown and increase enrollment at Lafayette and not hurt the socioeconomic balance. So this is a very simple move. It takes this area right here from Jamestown to Lafayette. And that is Green Springs West and Plantation. Yes, together. And so what this does is it takes our utilization of Jamestown from 111 down to 96. Lafayette goes up to 99. War Hill stays the same. Our socioeconomics at Jamestown go from 20 to 23%. Lafayette from 39 to 36. War Hill stays the same. And so it's a minimalistic move to, to balance the enrollment, given no additions. And, and we kind of block out this table down here because this is a scenario that we don't need additions to do. We can do it just based on our current capacity. And so this would only impact 113 students. And it, it does accomplish that goal of balancing that utilization. And it, it doesn't do a lot for the, the socioeconomics. But as we went through this, we really learned that the, you have to move almost an exponential amount of kids to really move that socioeconomic balance needle. And it's, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult sometimes. So here's our comparison side by side. Again, that minimal change. Okay, so here's our option two. Again, this is a very similar, similar move here, but instead of Green Springs West and Plantation, it's Powhatan Secondary moving from Jamestown to Lafayette. And it's not split, it's all of them. And so similar, similar impacts here. Jamestown from 111 down to 95. Lafayette, 86 to 100%. War Hill stays at 94. Pretty similar impact with the socioeconomics. This impacts 131 students. Here's our side by side map. So this is our, our, our last option that we kind of have of that minimal, that minimal approach. So what this one does is this is a King something.
Kings Mills.
Kings Mills. Would move from Jamestown to Lafayette. And so 111 to 99, Lafayette, 86 to 96. Again, all three of these options are going to be pretty, pretty comparable as far as their, their socioeconomic balance, number of students moved, and their utilization. This is an impact of 94 students, so this doesn't do as much as the other one did, but it's a pretty good balance here. So looking at them side by side. Okay, so now what we're getting into with option four is this is a more, a more in-depth scenario. This does require the utilizations at Jamestown and War Hill in order to work. It doesn't really do anything. It doesn't work without the, without the additions. So with the additions, we'd be 95 to 90% at Jamestown. Lafayette would go up slightly. War Hill, 80 to 85%. But we're able to impact the socioeconomics much better, but, you know, by, by moving more areas. And so Jamestown, instead of being at 23% in the scenarios one, two, and three, we're up to 27%. And Lafayette goes from 39 down to 33%. And War Hill stays about the same. This option is also contiguous. I'm going to go to the next slide and then I'll come back to this one. And so right now, we have, we have these detached areas up here. Scott's Pond, and there's some, there's some, I think some apartment communities right here, right around Lafayette. What this does is this, this fixes all of that, those disconnected areas. And so every single boundary is going to be contiguous, with the exception of this, you know, this one area that would move from, from Lafayette to War Hill. But I think that, you know, given the road network and, and the, you know, the, the close proximity, I think you could argue that it is contiguous. So looking at this, our socioeconomic spread is 27 to 33. We don't have any neighborhood splits. We've just got, we've got more movement because we're moving more area to, to better balance that socioeconomic balance. Okay, so that's scenario four. So here's scenario five. And what this, what this option was, is this was an attempt to basically get it perfect. And so if you look at this one, we're, we're at 30% at each high school. And our, our utilization is right around 96, 97% at each high school. We don't need additions with this, with this scenario. And there's a lot of areas that are moving. We've got both Powhatan Secondary and Green Springs and Plant, and Plantation moving from Jamestown to Lafayette. We've got more schools, we've got more students that aren't going to their closest neighborhood school. We're up to 5%. We've got kids that are, you know, in pretty close proximity to Jamestown coming up to Lafayette. So looking at this side by side, here's our current boundaries. This scenario is also contiguous. And we did, we did split up this area over here where, where part of it goes to, or part of it goes to Jamestown and part of it does stay at Lafayette. And we did try to use major roads in this scenario as well. And so again, this is that, this is that scenario. We tried to balance everything perfectly. So that's it for the, for the, the high school options. We, on the survey, we do have an option six, which is existing boundaries, no change. So we do have that, we do have that ability on the, on the survey. I didn't feel the need to kind of go through it because it's our first slide that we have here. As far as next steps go, Thursday, we're at War Hill, middle school maps from 5:00 to 6:30, high school maps from 7:00 to 8:30. Tuesday next week, Lafayette, high school maps 5:00 to 6:30, middle school maps 7:00 to 8:30. And again, our online survey will remain active through December 12th. Any, any questions on the data or the presentation?
Ms. Ome here.
Not a question, just, I guess, back to the chair's point. It will be very useful to have, particularly on the high school maps, the longevity.
Mm-hmm.
For each of those options, like really, really clear and spelled out for the community and other folks to see.
Okay.
How long does this get us?
I think it's, I mean, it's, it's going to be a little challenging because of our additions and not having additions. I, I don't think there's going to be that much difference in them. They're pretty similar from a balance of utilization standpoint, but we'll look into it and see if we can have that comparison like we want to do for the middle schools.
And, and also, I'm assuming that there's a connection between proximity and ease of transportation?
Yes.
So that's, that is an accurate assumption?
When we, when we developed these options internally, we had transportation representation there as we were developing these. And so.
Mr. Snipes is nodding, I trust. Okay. Any other questions about what was presented to us before we move on to the next discussion? So unlike, so what's different about high school is that we don't have to do this. And so because the, the discussion about whether or not to rezone high school or adjust attendance zones at the high school level has not been unanimous, I thought this was a good time to kind of check in and, and see what everyone's position is in terms of moving forward to the, to the next step and, and following the path of, of the middle schools and discussing them in December, these maps in December and then in January, with the potential of taking action in February. So with that, I guess, just would like input in kind of what your thoughts are about moving forward to the next steps. So Mrs. Young, would you like to just?
I'm, I'm for not moving forward with next steps. And part of, part of my reasoning is, is I, I think the impact on the number of students, I don't think it warrants it. And secondly, I'm, I'm still in favor of creating equity among programs at the different high schools. And because I think that solves a lot of the inequities among the high schools. So I am not in favor of pursuing high school changes.
So if, so if we're not going to, I'm just, I'm going to ask everybody these questions, but if we're not going to add space or maybe, don't know when, because we have to go through a planning process with the counties. And we don't, I'm not, if you could maybe unpack that, your statement about equity across programs and just kind of what you think about if there's a need to redistrict and when, that would be helpful, I think, to understand.
And I, I, okay. Well, first of all, I would like to see pathways at all the schools. I'd like to see access to early college at all the schools for our, you know, students that would like to go to Thomas Nelson and get credits there. I understand this, but when I've talked to, to students from the schools, they don't seem to think that Jamestown is that crowded. They seem to think it's okay. And so I'm also opposed to it because I think if students don't think they're that crowded, then, then I think maybe we should be listening to them and being concerned about what they're saying about their school. Because we're, we're looking at students leaving that school that have friendships there, that are already connected as far as, as teams are, you know, as sports, their mascot. I'm, I'm just not for moving that. And then we would also get into the other thing, which has not been mentioned here, is then we're going to have to start talking about, about grandfathering students. And how many students is that going to impact if we're going to have students decide, if we decide to choose one of these options, how many students are going to need to be grandfathered? Because then you're looking at students that are going to their senior year. And we're certainly, I wouldn't think that we would be considering moving them. So that's also another issue here. So I'm not sure that I think it's, I don't think it's the right time to move it.
So, so if I understand you correctly, you're not in favor of moving forward for the foreseeable future? Just keep things as they are for the foreseeable future?
For the foreseeable future.
Dr. Heron, could you speak to pathways and, and early college for just a second, please?
Yes, early college.
Yes, early college is available at, at all three high schools. It started at War Hill, but it's been expanded to...
Right, I understood that.
...both others. With limitations in numbers, Dr. Carroll can certainly give some information with regard to pathways. We have something at all three high schools, and we're in the process of working out what that looks like next year. Dr. Carroll, do you want to add anything to that, or that's pretty much it? Yeah, we're, we're in the process of literally taking all three and figuring out what the next year looks like in all three schools. So they all do have options right now. And I know Dr. Carroll's even exploring other things like Project Lead the Way and to see what's possible there to have something like that in all three schools as well.
And I'm, I'm excited about that. I think that's going to be wonderful for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Zombi, what do you think about moving forward at the high school?
I think we need to move forward. I would like to have feedback from the community on, on each of these options. For me, this is closely related to the CIP. And so without knowing what our funding partners are prepared to fund, I don't know how we cannot discuss redistricting. I think we have to mitigate the capacity issues at Jamestown. There's certainly an opportunity through redistricting to, to bring equity and parity with programs, with socioeconomic status. There are some things that we can do that are programmatic, that are not, not tied to redistricting, but we can't get past the fact that Jamestown is over capacity. Even if students don't think that it is, the data is very clear that it, that it is. And so I think it's our responsibility as a school board, attendance zones that are balanced, and, and our, and our forward thinking. And so I see components here that I like. I like the kind of expansions personally. So I, I want to hear from the community, which, looking at these options, what options do they think are most viable? I think our funding partners need to weigh in on, on these options and see that we're, that the struggle is real, but we can't do nothing.
What do you think?
About going forward with the high school?
Yes, sir.
I'm, as I said before, I believe I was the only one at the last board meeting.
Why would, do you not want to move forward?
Um, I, as, as has been pointed out by a number of people on the board, is there are many things up in the air right now. And I would just as soon settle the middle school redistricting and depending on what happens this next year, running to the redistricting of the high school.
Kind of put these on a shelf and then maybe revisit it a year from now?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, you are a leader on, in this discussion. You were the first out at the gate. Why don't you tell us?
I think it was May I was the first out in here.
Yes, sir.
Our funding partners had to consider redistricting, they didn't say to do it. And they were right to ask us to consider it, because it would seem that, you know, if you, if you move a couple, move some students around, that you can get there. What the, what these maps seem to show us is that, that we can't get there without adding additional capacity. Redistricting doesn't get us either capacity or gets us socioeconomic balance. So I think, I think we need to have this as part of the strategic discussion at high school. If we want to send these maps out to get public comment, that was fine, but they should have the asterisk that we are not going to do it next year. That we are sending this maps, these maps out to kind of get a thought while we go through our strategic planning process, maybe put a task force together, community members to kind of figure out what we want to do with high school. I think it tells us that we need additional inventory, whether that is expansions of the high schools, or whether that is down the road, a new high school with maybe trailers between here to there. But I think that has to be part of our strategic discussion that we have. You know, if we, if we, let's say, let's say now that we do go forward with the expansions, Jamestown's our over-capacity school, I would say that we would do our, our expansions at Jamestown first. And then maybe after we do that expansion, then we look at redistricting while we have that inventory at our highest school, as we do the expansions at Lafayette and War Hill. I wouldn't think that we would have to wait until the end of all the expansions to do them if we're going to do it that way. But I just don't see where redistricting for the next school year gets us anywhere for longevity. And then my concern would be that we redistrict next year, we do the expansion, then we're like, you know, but we should do, we should do something a little bit different. We should have a little bit different redistricting area, and so then have to go through another redistricting process after we get through our expansions. So I think it's incumbent upon us to have a strategic plan. I don't think we have a strategic plan right now, I think we have a reactionary plan. And I think we just need to hold off until we get that strategic plan.
I would like to see us take the good options, like take the options and get feedback from the community on the options. That's what I would like. I think that along with the strategic feedback that we need about, are we okay with trailers? Are we okay with spending, you know, $25 million for expansion? I like, what, what are our funding partners okay with and comfortable with? And it's nice to have these options, to be able to, I guess, look at the different scenarios as we're going forward. I, I think it's important to get people's feedback on them now. So for me, that's why I think we can move forward without actually deciding to do anything with it. I think we can move forward with getting feedback from the community on the different options. I think we're in a tricky position when we're so overcapacity at Jamestown to not do anything. To just keep putting everything off for a year, I think it's not fair to our, our kids. And I do want to say that if I were a high school student and didn't want to move from my high school, I would very clearly say it's not too crowded for me. So that, to me, is not a viable, that's not the data I'm looking at. That's not the data that I'm, I'm considering really valid. So that's my opinion.
Currently, given the presented information, I don't believe we should move forward with it. I'm not opposed to getting feedback from the community on the maps. They're important to have. I think there are too many unknowns, as many of the other board members have said, to decide that for next year.
We have kind of, not for the foreseeable future, I put them on a shelf for a year from now. What do we want to weigh in on that?
I'd like to put it on the shelf for a year.
Right. So the majority of the board is not in favor of moving forward. That said, as part of this process, we have been inclusive of items in moving forward in, out of deference to the minority. And, and so with that in mind, I am going to, as the chair's prerogative, go ahead and keep this on the agenda for the December meeting at a minimum. And I am going to ask that the feedback from the public be shared with the board. And I'm also going to ask Dr. Heron if she can take a look at these maps and perhaps think about, for the first three options, which move the fewest number of students, if there's an opportunity for a phase-in approach. And perhaps you can come back and, and report to us on that at the December meeting. Is that something that you would be willing?
We can look at that, for sure. So what you're planning is maybe starting with ninth grade and moving through if we were to move forward at all?
Well, if you could look and talk to, you know, transportation and talk to, you know, consultants and see. I think the research that you all have done has been pretty exhaustive, so thank you for that. It's not, it's not common to redistrict when space is not being added, when capacity's not being added or taken away. That said, the terminology spot redistricting is not unheard of. It does, it does happen when capacity at schools becomes imbalanced. And so, so that is the, that is the reason for that question to you, Dr. Heron, and really exploring that a little bit. I think we owe it to the public to, and to the taxpayers to do that, particularly because of the CIP conversation we had where we moved down a little. Because if we build a new high school, fourth high school, or if we add capacity now, we've delayed that even further. So you're talking, you know, at least four years, probably five, before anything's, any additional space is online, which means if we take action now, there's, no one child's high school career would be impacted twice. So I think that's, in, in my thinking, you know, and, and again, my conversations with our, the leadership, our funders, I think it is important for us to move forward, at least put it on the December agenda with that opportunity to get the feedback from staff and from the public. I think that these maps at the high school level demonstrate that we can achieve some of our, some of our goals, and in terms of capacity and economic balance. So, so I think that regardless of what we end up doing with inventory, I think we're, I think we're compelled to at least explore further, adjusting on the ground with what we have now, knowing that no, no additional inventory, no additional capacity is going to be coming to us anytime soon. That, does anyone have any comments or questions about that?
Uh, yeah, so, so, so we are going forward with the presumption that we may actually redistrict high schools next spring, even though the majority thinks that that's not what we shouldn't do.
Well, I mean, as I said, we have deferred to the minority on this process before. And so because it's a split board, I think that's the best thing to do. Chair, I'm going to take that prop.
Okay, then where was your prerogative to do that? But I think that if we were to say that we were going to consider them and take it off for next year, that you might get better conversations than if you say that it's still on the, on the table for next year. I think, I think that you were setting up with a, I mean, we have, let's, let's make sure we understand that our actions have consequences. And we have kids who are up right now wondering where they're going to school next year, and they're watching school board meetings instead of studying calculus. And so if we were to take this off, they could go back and study in calculus and realize that they weren't going to have to worry about this until next year. And I just don't think that we're being fair to our community to, to go that way. But, I guess, so, so, so we're going to have, so we're going to, I mean, we can still go out for the public comment, but take it off the, off the map for next year.
Zombi, do you have anything to say to that?
Yeah, the only thing, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Um, I'm, I'm eager to hear feedback from the community, which includes our funding partners. And there's an opportunity, not only to address capacity issues through this redistricting, but an opportunity to, to look at equity and parity. So, and that, for me, is important. There is distinctly an imbalance at the high school level. There is, there is not parity with economic integration. And so while not all these options move the needle very far, some do more than others. And so I would like to hear from the community and from funding partners, is it, is it important to, to try to fix that now? And at the same time, mitigate capacity issues? I'd like to hear what the community has. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add is we've gotten an awful lot of feedback from parents already, school redistricting. They had touched on a number of the criteria that we've actually been looking at. So I, I hope we don't ignore that feedback that we've had. So we, we've already had some of that feedback already. So I'm willing to wait for more feedback, but I don't want to ignore what we've already received from parents, family, community, community members.
We've also heard from a whole lot of community members about the, the need for equity in our schools. I mean, a lot of broad-based community support for that. So I, I think we have, on one hand, we're receiving feedback from neighborhoods who rightfully, it's just like a rightful, like a gut, yes, I don't want my kid to move to another high school next year. And then on the other hand, we have kind of another whole level of feedback that we're getting from the community, saying that we have an inequitable situation in our school system. So I, I am...
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I hope I didn't leave the impression that I was dividing up the feedback. I was just, what I had said was, we've received a lot of feedback. And, and, and the feedback has dealt with a number of our criteria, just, just as you said, the equity issue, we have had a lot of feedback on that. So, yeah, no, I, I meant all of the, all the feedback, and that includes that.
But I guess to your point, Dr. Beers, we haven't had feedback about these maps and about opportunities to correct and bring balance with equity. So there's, there's some opportunity here for folks to look at different ways that our schools can look and operate. So that, this is, people haven't had an opportunity to respond to this.
And, and, yeah, and I would say that we're redistricting middle school no matter what. If we're going to redistrict high school, I don't see the point in delaying that a year when we know it's going to stick for at least four years and therefore not interrupt any student's high school career. Because I think that's, that's a pretty important thing. And if there's an opportunity to look at these maps, which are new to all of us, including the staff, and figure out a way to phase it in on one or a couple of that map options so that, to your point, Mr. Kelly, students are not, don't have to move high schools, but can stay where they are, I think it's too soon to say no to that. And so I think, I see in these maps a possibility for staff to come back to us and see if that's possible. You know, miss, you know, the, the consultants talked about that phase-in approach in their original presentation to us. Staff can explore that. We can see if we can redistrict in one year, middle school and high school. And if we can figure that out, we could move the needle a little on socioeconomic status, not a lot, but a little, and we could ease capacity and buy a little time for our funders. All the schools will be fuller than we want them to be, or that best, than best practice, but they're not, no one would, no one school would be overcapacity. So I think it's just too early. So I would like, as chair, to put it on the next meeting and see if there's an opportunity. And if it doesn't work out, if the numbers don't work, if the math doesn't work out, then, you know, then I think we have more information. But I still think, and, and having read the James City County CIP budget message last year, I think the county administrator was pretty clear that there's not, there's not any money for many years.
The county administrator also was always, I'm sorry that he's left us, but he always, from the day he got here, was always focusing on long-term strategic planning so that there was plenty of time to work out the kinks, to deal with some of the things that we have to do in the future. Not, I'm not going to speak for Brian, but he gets to speak for himself, but he was not excited about sudden shifts and changes. So I, I don't, you know, some of the things that are in the CIP now weren't there two years ago. I think that's part of this whole, and I think Mr. Kelly is absolutely right, is that we do need, and I think there's, there's a reason for why it's been so difficult, or is difficult, to develop a long-range plan. We've had five superintendents in 10 years. That's really hard, just to, to create, to sustain, long-term, long-range planning. So I've, I echo that, the need for doing that. So, but that...
Ms. Ombi? To your point, Dr. Beers, I, I don't think any of us believe we should not be long-range in our thinking. However, we have to deal with students that we have in our buildings today, and tomorrow, and next year, and two years down the road. And what I've heard... And what I've heard, at least from, from my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors, there, there's not going to be a school in the next four or five years. So I think that is a reality. Maybe when they see these maps, they'll come up with something else. But we have capacity issues today.
I understand that.
We have to address those today.
I also understand that we have our own responsibility in making decisions about what we think is important for our students. And, and the long-range plan is, I know the elementary school, the new elementary school is somewhere on the book, somewhere, coming down the line, that's in that long plan. Yeah, so how, so, and you say, well, they're not going to, they're not, they're not going to provide the funding for, to build a new school. We're going to need an elementary school probably before we need a high school. So I don't, I don't accept that logic.
Capacity issues today.
Okay. First of all, I, I do appreciate the fact that, that we as the minority originally has been attended to. I do appreciate that. I'm very concerned about sending a message out to the community that is going to leave people up in the air. I mean, that's basically what we're saying we're going to do. We're going to leave them up in the air until the spring. I, I don't appreciate that, and I think that's a wrong message to send to the community for people on this board that don't want to move forward. And, and I think that should be respected. I, I understand everything that everybody has said. I, I don't want to leave the community up in the air, and I don't want to leave students up in the air about where they're going to be next year. So I'm concerned about where we're at at the moment.
Zombi?
To that point, Mrs. Young, so all of the families whose children will be impacted by the middle schools will be up in the air until the spring. We're okay with that. Because we have to make a decision about the middle school maps, and we're not going to make that decision until February. They don't know. Like, so right now, my middle schooler is staying up late, wondering where he's going to go to school. So that's okay at the middle school level, but not at the high school level?
We don't have a news, we don't have a new high school coming on board, and I-
Have capacity issues.
Well, and I understand the capacity issues. I've seen the numbers. I was looking at our nice spreadsheet that we had earlier. I am not for leaving families up in the air. Every parent I've spoken to, and I have several of them here, I have told them, all bets are off for middle school. We know that all bets are off for middle school.
High school?
No, I'm talking about middle school. All middle schoolers are, there's, there's going to be redistricting in the middle school no matter what. We all know that. Middle schoolers know that. I am not for leaving high schoolers up in the air, or their parents.
So even if we were able to choose one of the first three maps to ease capacity that we know we don't have at Jamestown, and we do have at Lafayette, and we were able to allow students to matriculate freshmen starting, so no student had to leave their current high school, you four would not support that?
No.
Ease capacity for the next?
Four years.
Four years. Would not support that.
I think you're going to have to produce numbers to, to show how many freshmen are going to be impacted, how many sophomores are going to be impacted, how many juniors. I am not for doing that.
So if no, no sophomore, juniors, or seniors had to move their current high school?
If you-
Excuse me, sir, there's a- Thank you, parliamentarian.
Yeah, I'm sorry. As parliamentarian, the only people who get to talk are the people up here.
So I just want to make sure that the, the four people, Mrs. Young, Dr. Beers, Mr. Kelly, if we have the opportunity to ease capacity for four to five years based on slower growth projections, based on the first three maps, easing that in so that no student has to leave where they currently are, and then allowing us the time to do the strategic planning that you're all talking about, plus do this all in one year, not have to revisit this a year, are you saying you would not do that?
I would not do that, no. I mean, that does not, that is not showing that you have a strategic plan. That is showing that you were taking knee-jerk reaction. And I also would like, just had to understand, how have, how has this board so far deferred to the minority?
Oh, with the criteria? The, the-
With, with the whole discussion about whether we should go for the high school redistricting or not?
No, no, the criteria included, we had four votes to not include neighborhoods, and because it was a close vote, we included it to defer to the minority, which was the right thing to do.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Young, did you under-
I understand what you're saying, but I would like to know how many students are affected.
Okay, so if we provide that information for the December meeting?
That doesn't mean I'll change my mind, but I would like to see that information. Yes, that would, that would, I would appreciate the information. And then you're talking about the three maps, because you're going to have to have information about freshmen, incoming freshmen at each of the high schools, right? At least, like, for example, the map number one, where you're talking about Green Springs West and Plantation, then you're going to have to demonstrate how many freshmen that would affect, that would be moved from Jamestown to Lafayette. And then same with map two, then you're going to have to show how many students from Palatin Secondary would be affected, that would be moved from, that would be potential students at Jamestown that would be moved to Lafayette. And the same with, with map three, with the Kings Mill people. So, oh, I just think it's a mess. I, I don't want to move forward, really, I don't. I would be interested in seeing the information, and that's putting extra work on our staff.
Given the current information and the current input, I'm still against it, but I'm open to receiving more information, more dialogue from the community, hearing what they have to say.
Dr. Beers?
I think I've, say, well, I just want to say-
Anything else on this item?
So just, so, I understand the people on the board who are opposed to, to looking at options for relieving the overcrowded. The other option is that we're going to just maintain overcrowded schools for the indeterminate future.
One overcrowded school.
One overcrowded school for the indeterminate future, at least three or four years, right? I mean, I'm looking at-
That's my understanding, yes.
So four years of overcrowded at one school. Okay.
And, and then just to add to that, too, there would be a missed, a missed opportunity to, to bring equity and parity and, and balance among our schools. Missed opportunity.
So we'll ask staff to take a look at the first three maps, and whether there's an option to phase those in, and what kind of capacity relief will we realize at Jamestown, and then, and then filling Lafayette, and how many-
But we're also, Madam Chair, we're also looking at transportation.
And the transportation impact of that.
I think you have some of the information already, because we already know how the capacity would be impacted at Lafayette should we make minimal changes. And we also know how the socioeconomic status will be impacted if we make any of the three minimal changes that were presented tonight. What we really don't know, and I'm not even sure where to start, Mr. Snipes, we can, we can ask questions and see what transportation information we can find.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to be a relatively proportional number between the three. It's just, you know, maybe 25% of 131, 25% of 94, and 25% of 203, and that could be the difference.
So maybe we can flesh that out a little bit and provide those options to the board. And, and as, you know, if that information is provided to you all, perhaps it'll-
I would also, I've already started counting up the number of empty classrooms. All three of the high schools. I'd like to see how that gets built into this whole utilization capacity. I know we can't do that, we can't do that now, because that involves some serious scheduling. But there are, there are a lot of classrooms that are empty during the day, and that is another way of dealing with, that are at capacity. So I'm not saying do that now, you know, I'm not saying do it now, but I, I think that is useful information.
The only thoughts is that at Jamestown, right now, there are, because we are over capacity, and a lot of the rooms are being utilized. There are rooms to use at War Hill, but we see growth coming there quicker. Growth is not coming at Lafayette, and there is some, there are some rooms for use there. And so there is the potential to, to use that. They're through a redistricting process or trying to do something programmatically.
Dr. Beers, to your point, there is, there are, there are rooms that are available to be used at Lafayette, so what do you propose we do?
To what? Not just Lafayette, though, the other high schools.
There's none at Jamestown, so there's some at War Hill, and there's some at Lafayette. So who would go in those rooms, and how would they?
Well, I don't, that, that, you know, that's a good question. I just would like to know how many could be accommodated in those classes, in those, you know, those empty classrooms.
But would that suggest redistricting?
Just a number I'd like to know.
It's also complicated by what courses you're offering and how you're going to offer them. It's not enough just to have an empty space, but what do you put in that space? And how does that fit into the, into the academic program? It's a much more complicated question than just to say, we have, we have an empty classroom, let's put 30 kids in it.
Dr. Herron, do you have any questions about the information?
And, Madam Chair, from what I understand, just for clarity, moving forward, obviously we're not going to bring to the, the public for feedback any of the options that include additions, because we're not, we're not going there right now. We don't know what the potential is. And so are we bringing all the other four options to the public? Three minimal movement options, and the one that moves seven or 800 students? Or are we asking for feedback across the board? What, what, just for, make sure we give the right maps out there?
So, in terms of, in your opinion, your collective opinion, is the idea of phasing in attendance zones in the other maps logistically feasible? I think we talked about that early on, as complicated and perhaps cost prohibitive, given our current transportation situation. So in your-
It's going to be difficult. Any phase-in approach is going to impact transportation greatly. I don't, nothing is impossible. We would have to look at it. I really don't know if the minimal movement maps or moving everyone around will impact transportation any differently. And without having rest is finalized, and knowing exactly who's going where, it's, it's difficult to plan routes, to even see what we'd need to do. It's a very, it's hard to come up with answers without a very detailed and comprehensive approach to it. So I'd be a little bit concerned about bringing information that I couldn't stand over at this moment in time. But we certainly can-
So what's your recommend, I mean, do you have any-
Take a look at it.
Thoughts about, I mean, your question specifically about which maps to, to, to share with the public?
The only one I was mentioning was the one with additions that we take off.
Okay.
Because we're not planning additions. We don't know what we're doing in that yet with long-range planning. So that was, there are three minimal options and one more movement at the high school, which still leaves four options to go to the public. But I don't think we should include option that is viable, all right, option four, or which is not viable without the actual additions.
So is everybody okay if option four is removed? Some of them want all of them removed. I just, you know, for the record, I just want to say that I think it's incompatible to move the request for additions back and, and say you're going to strategic plan and then not redistrict. I think those are two incompatible thoughts. I think you could say, let's do the additions and let's ask and see if we get it, and then hold off on redistricting to see what that says. But I think if this board decides, for very good reason, to push it back and, and work with our funders to figure out what it is this community wants to do with regard to high school space, given that we know that pushes it back, the idea of just allowing a school to be overcrowded, knowing we have capacity at another school, is just very difficult, or I don't, I don't understand that.
If I could ask for clarity again, do you want to take forward the option at all that moves a large number of students at this point? Is that something you still want input on, just to make sure that that's where we're going?
I do. I think that's equity and parity and, and balance. And quite frankly, I like option four. You know, option, recognizing if we, to expand, you know, this, this gets us 10 years. And util, I mean, utilization is, is fairly balanced.
Option five, just for those of you with kind of like historical, when we were building War Hill, option five was the, was one of the maps. It was option C back in the day. And I, I always think it's kind of interesting that a lot of times when we're trying to achieve balance, a lot of times you'll-
Sorry.
You'll have really weird-looking maps in order to achieve balance. And this option five, I'm just making an observation, is a very contiguous map that achieves perfect balance. So it's just interesting to me that we have engineered in our current high school zones an extremely inequitable situation. And it is engineered that way. When you look at what could just naturally be a contiguous option that actually balances all the schools.
Jim, Jim Beers and I agree. It needs to be there.
All right, so we'll get more information for the December board meeting. C, yes?
So which maps are going to the public?
I think, I, I think it's, other than the one that we just took off the table because we're not asking for additions at this point.
It's gone.
So that one, that one that was required, additions makes no sense. But everything else, I think, is out there. And again, want to reiterate, please, for people who are listening, comment online, go to the meetings if your schedules allow. Our, all of our numbers are published. Write us, I've gotten regular old U.S. mail, that's great. Please, please be in touch. All right, if there's nothing else to say about 10.04, that moves us to 11.01, board member comments and requests. Mrs. Young?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the school division for the- Well, first of all, I wanna thank the School Division for the red sheet.
Thank you, Scott.
I requested that, and, thank you, I'm-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
That's, that's a lot of work, and, and I appreciate it, because I think that's, gives us a better picture of where we are with capacity issues. I wanna apologize for the FaceTime call from my son, who keeps forgetting that I'm on the school board on Tuesday nights. I wanna thank Dr. Moore for the Equity Literacy presentation. Literacy, to me, is the number-one thing that all kids need, so I'm, that's huge on my agenda. I thank Cooperative Strategies for standing there all that time. I'm sorry about that. I do want to encourage the public to, to go online and give feedback. Please attend the, the two opportunities to go to the schools and look at the maps, and please utilize the feature that's going to be online, where you can put in your address and see where your student would end up for next year. But, all in all, I wanna thank the School Division for their hard work. I wanna thank the board. We may have differences of opinion, but I think in the end, it will all come together, okay? And if not, we'll still like each other. So, anyway, I wanna thank Mr. Harris for being a spider. I'm, I'm still concerned about what kind of spider that's going to be. Please don't make it a black widow, but I'm excited about the colors, and, and it sounds to me like, after the presentation tonight on James Blair, that you're gonna be there next year, Principal, Mr. Principal Harris. So, anyway, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Young, Ms. Ombi?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to acknowledge that I think all, most, if not all, of our PTAs and PTSAs have just wrapped up their Reflections Art Contest, and so, students have moved on to the district level, and then eventually go on to the state level, and wanted to thank all of our PTAs and PTSAs for their hard work in coordinating this opportunity for students to showcase their art. I'd like to echo what Mrs. Young just said, encourage citizens to attend the, the redistricting forums on the 30th and on the 5th, and just wanted to share with the community, as we work through the CIP process, I wanted to point out that things like roofs and chillers and HVAC systems, sewer lines are not particularly exciting, but they are necessary, and I'm very grateful to our funding partners, and then by extension, the community that they fund the maintenance of our buildings. As I travel to neighboring schools for sporting events, it's evident that not all communities do such a great job. So, when I see missing ceiling tiles and exposed electrical wiring and rain is coming into the gym where students are playing a sport, I'm very grateful to be part of this community. So, I believe that our board takes its fiduciary responsibility very seriously. We are advocates for our schools and for our students and for this division, but we are also all taxpayers, and we weigh the cost and the longevity of all of our capital projects. In order for this division to remain premier, we'll need to continue to expand and/or build schools to meet the projected growth. So, finding that balance between cost and timing and need is delicate and requires collaboration and community support. Did have an opportunity to tour Clarebird Baker yesterday with the chair and City Councilwoman, Barbara Ramsey, and I'm always struck and astonished to learn how demographics are changing drastically in our community. And so, CBB has a significantly higher number of, of students, ELL students, students with disabilities, and economically challenged students. And, and with all of those challenges, I just applaud all of the staff, teachers and administrators at CBB for striving to ensure that each and every student achieves academic success. So, I wanted to remind Williamsburg that our demographics are changing. Students are coming to our, our, our schools with a lot of need, and that requires resources to meet that need.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'll keep this, I, I, once again, applaud those, the winners of all of those things, especially Model UN, but the Robotic Award, Art Prizes, the presentation by Norge tonight, it's fabulous, and Dr. Moore. Mr. Paolo knows I'm always excited to hear about what you're doing. CNN Williamsburg, it's, it's always been in the forefront of a lot of literacy initiatives over the years. I look forward to coming out there and seeing some of that at work. The other thing is, I, I, I really, it's important to all staff. That's why I would speak to them much longer, because you put, you put in so many hours, and I wanna shut up so you can-
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
I hope everyone had a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and coming back to finish out the rest of the, at least the calendar year. I won't poll my fellow board members to see who went to the One Act Plays at Lafayette after my prodding at the last meeting, but if you missed out, it's your fault and your miss. I would like to congratulate the Lafayette football team for winning the region. If we can find the video of Dr. Nutley giving the team the trophy, it's classic TV. She was, her excitement and engagement with the team was really amazing to me, and best wishes on the team going out and winning one last trophy. And this weekend, Jamestown Theater is having their Christmas Carol play, which I look forward to attending this weekend, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
I had the privilege of participating in a design thinking exercise with the high schools over at the School of Ed, and where I, I got to see kind of a work in progress of how the school system is going to try to attack the challenge of the new profile of student graduate with regard to career opportunities. And so, I just wanted to thank Dr. Herron and the rest of the staff for letting me participate in that. That was really a fun exercise. And then I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to Stone House's Blue Ribbon event tomorrow morning. I think that'll be great, and of course, all the rest of the wonderful things. I'm gonna keep it short, too. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Taylor?
All right, so, many of the board members have already turned in their board evaluations, but if you have not already done so, please turn them in to Mr. So by this Thursday. It's the last day of November. I can't believe it. Okay, so, and I want to encourage the community to come out to attend our upcoming community dialogues on redistricting. We look forward to receiving your feedback.
I wanted to just, again, congratulate Ms. McCory for her award tonight, and I saw her, to apologize that I was not able to go to the One Act Play, 'cause I had a, another commitment, but she reminded me that for 11 years in a row. And she's been there 11 years, so she's a real force there at Lafayette with those students, and it's amazing work out of them, so she's to be commended on many levels. And then also, I wanted to thank my colleagues up here for tonight's discussions that were very, very difficult, and, you know, it's, we all have to make really tough decisions, and that's even more difficult to do as a group. So, I appreciate all of your input, and that we will get where we need to be. Good time. I also wanna thank those of you who are able to attend the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention. There were a lot of really good plenary speakers and some good breakout sessions, and we're all sharing that information with each other. It's, it's exciting to hear about what else is going on around the state and what best practices are out there. So, thank you for that. And with that, I'll move on to upcoming meetings. You've heard this a lot, but we've got two redistricting community dialogues, one on November 30th at 5:00 in the auditorium at War Hill, and then one on the 5th of December at 5:00 in the auditorium at Lafayette. I hope everyone can, can join in person or online or both. And then, item 12.02, upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on December 12th at Room 309 in the Annex, School Board Central Office, and then followed at 6:30 in Room 300 at the Annex, there's a work session and action items, again, on the 12th. And then, on the January 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in Room 309 of the Annex at James Blair at 6:00 p.m., we'll have a closed session, followed by our organizational meeting at 6:30 on the, on the 2nd of, of January in the Annex. So, those are our upcoming meetings, and with that, we are adjourned.